All right, why don't we open the meeting? And Chief Gamache, I know you've got training a little bit, so why don't you start us off?
Thank you.
Um, do you want?
Not a suggestion.
Ask her.
Well, good afternoon. We've reached a 153 incidents here to date. Uh, noteworthy as an instance of since last time we met, we had a serious accident on Shaker Road in the middle of the night, uh, just north of Shaker Village. Uh, thankfully, they, you know, it's, um, uh, moderate injuries to the officer operator. He said he swore to avoid deer. Um, then we responded to a structural fire a couple of weeks ago in tri- assistant tri- just in a fire. So, um, with fire prevention, we did last week for the Goon Drill at Shaker Village. We operated hydrants and a fire pump that have been probably operated in a long, long time. Uh, the director, we made his presence for Shaker Village with us. It's going great. Everything worked as is and, you know, we've come up with agreement that, well, I researched the agreement that we can use that water source if we, there any fire in that area.
Great.
I mean, we're just trying to make that an able thing. And, and they're on board at Shaker Village for us, who was doing that as well.
Good. Thank you.
Um, this month I've been doing pretty smooth daycare and stuff. It's a required by the state. Uh, all of them in town, um, in places of assembly permits. They do this month for all the town builders and working on those. Library is next. Town fireworks are, uh, July 5th. I will have staff and detail of two firefighters on duty from the time the fire trucks roll, from the time the fireworks roll into the property around 3 o'clock until about, uh, an hour after the show to make sure that there's no spot fires or anything like that. So, gonna be able to respond to the cause in the immediate area and I'll be up, I'll be up for that display as well. So, we'll have three people on duty for that. Uh, one member recently committed to paramedic training. Uh, he's, uh, that's a pretty big accomplishment. Uh, he's med, he's an active member of the department, so another paramedic level person in our department. One long, long time, 17 year member just separated from service last month. And, um, we're, we're down a number, so I put it in a newsletter, but, uh, you know, if you're a young aspiring or anybody that, um, looking to get involved in that and helping their community, we encourage people to reach out so we can have a discussion, so. Uh, the Picard Road Hydrant, we're working with the State Wetlands Project, uh, State Wetlands to get the proper permits before we push shovel in the ground. Uh, we've been, I had the owner of the property in my office two weeks ago and we're on the same page. And, uh, so we hope to get that done soon, like, sort of, a little later. Our NRS, it was our reporting platform nationally. It's a fall, uh, fall, uh, fall 25 rollout. I've been working on that on the side. We're participating next Thursday in the truck day at the library. We enjoy doing that, having to interact with the local children and all this stuff and talking to people. So, that's, that's a day we really look forward to, appreciate the invite. Uh, so a year from now is our, the new engine that we, um, that we purchased two years ago. It's scheduled to be, uh, completed. Probably deliver it, mark that for that. But, uh, so we've taken the next step in preparation. So, in theory, everything that's on the 1996 HEB engine three, that it will be replacing. In theory, everything on the NRS one, not the new engine. So, we've gone through, um, and see what's functional, what's not, what needs to be replaced. Um, uh, at probably $30,000 a grand with holes, nozzles, in radios, it's all a lot of grant money. So, that's nothing that will cost upon anything. That's sitting on my shelf, ready to be put on the new fire truck. But things like fire extinguishers, access and stuff like that, if, if we can put them in the engine regardless if it's non-functional, then we'll just go buy a new one. So, um, and I do have a line for that. And as far, and, and a bond as well. Yeah. So, um, if I didn't, if I could, the bond was 850, so, uh, and the fire truck was 800. So, I had that 50 to work with, but if I could purchase someone out, end of the year, my good money and save some of that 50, um, that's what I'm looking for.
Great. And just quickly, Chief, I know you stripped the old engine and moved everything you can onto the new. And what happens with the old?
Uh, we haven't had a discussion yet.
Oh, okay.
We haven't had a discussion in, uh, probably five years.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, probably over the next year I'll have a recommendation for, for you and, um, both of you. Uh, me and both of you.
Okay, great.
And we were down at the river last week. The weather is gonna get warmer eventually. It stopped raining on Saturdays, so people will start using our beaches. Uh, five years ago, one town purchased some signs as well. We had the free dollars in 2020. Uh, one of the things that delayed response is people didn't know where they were. Uh, so these signs on the port beach access points of the river, um, say, according to this and actually named the beach. So, there's no delay there. And we put some lifesaving equipment at each beach as well. So, that stuff was put out last week. So, we're ready to go.
Do you happen to have any pictures of the signs and equipment?
I do. I thought I sent that to you from the newsletter.
This month?
No, last month's newsletter. It wasn't.
I saw the, I saw the sign, I saw the verbiage that it was going to. I didn't see any pictures attached, but I'll look again.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I'll do the picture on that, but if you didn't get it, you know, I'd be happy to hear it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that's all we have. Unless you have any questions?
Uh, thank you. Thanks as always.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Cool.
Last month, we had seven incidents, one arrest, one accident, eight five citations, 392 calls for service. We issued research warrants. Uh, this week we're going to the school. I don't know who else is gonna take you out. But you guys all know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
The earth's market.
Correct.
That's not.
That's like school. I'll be there.
Okay, good. So, I don't know if you, I don't know if you can copy, but the, the voting has been very spirited with, uh...
I haven't seen any of it.
Yeah, it's, it's good. So, um, I'm gonna be out of town Wednesday, whatever, home Wednesday night. I'll tally up. And then you and I can work then Thursday morning, so.
Yeah, as soon as I get that, I'll, uh, email my father.
Yeah, I love being in there. I think the kids just did a great job, so.
I'm hoping to get those actually done this year.
Yeah, yeah, but while I'm thinking about it, you're going to take the original winning one with you?
Yeah, I got it. I got it scanned.
Yes.
Get it emailed.
I figured as much. I've got it at home in a safe place, so.
Uh, either, either I take the original or you scan it and email it to me, either way.
Why don't you take the original?
Yeah.
I'm not even sure my scanner works.
Then I'll say.
I appreciate this best, pretty much.
You can always take a photo.
Yeah, 'cause once you give it to me Thursday, then I'll email them and say, hey.
And this is for just so, well, you know, it's.
It's not a personal thing.
The tricentile.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, that makes a nice change from incidents, arrests, accidents, and thefts.
Yes, it would.
Is there anything, um, about the statistics that we need to know?
Yeah. We're, uh, spending a little bit more time on 106 this week, just because it's a bike week, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Extra, a lot of extra time or just, uh, in the usual or just?
No, it's just, uh, with the, uh, sort of the track, they have, uh, Indians there, Harleys there, they do a bunch of demo rides.
Oh, that's right.
There's a lot more motorcycle traffic. We're just trying to keep people from excessive speed coming out of track. Cause it's been down 106 this, like, has, I think we only had one accident of a motorcycle since we started last.
Right, that's good.
Oh, that's only, that's good.
In our portion. So, I don't know about the rest of the ones.
Right, I haven't heard. That's a good sign.
Yeah.
I, I hope it stays though. That's how we do it.
All right, good.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Sam?
We have unpaid receivables.
Yeah.
Twenty page documents. You've got the first and the last pages to show the totals on the front and on the last ones, which are timber stacks and the used change tax on the back. There's 1,118 outstanding tax bills for the 2025 bill, but that's because we haven't received any of our mortgage payments yet.
Yeah.
So.
Do those usually come in a big plump load?
Right. Several hundred this time.
Ouch.
So.
Okay.
That's sort of got a high balance on the first half of the bill.
Good.
The second page on the packet is the summary of activity by owner for, you know, property that's up for deed as of June 30th.
So, since we talked last, which was two weeks ago now.
Two weeks ago.
Any, any activity, any communication, any?
No communication from the property owner since May 22nd. So, if you look at that, the top invoice that the 2022 lien, she made payment on May 22nd, uh, $3,000.
Yep.
Now is the last time we've seen her. So. We received all the receipts back, both TD Bank and she received a deed notice, and so she's got the notice.
Yeah.
Um, I tracked down TD Bank and I called them and I called them. Finally, today we got a call back. Um, they originally said that they were going to work with her and then they called me back and half an hour later and said they will not work with her. They will not be paying that lien balance of $1,798.69.
That's true.
So, TD Bank is out.
From here forward?
From here forward. Yes, for, for this deed process.
Very.
Yeah.
And am I correct saying the bottom number, the 1877551, is that the total?
That represents everything that's due.
Yeah.
For all the bills.
Yeah.
Not just the $1,700 balance that she's gotta pay to avoid deed on Monday the 30th.
Yeah. So, you need tonight a yes or a no from us?
Correct. What kind of deal looks up the deed?
Yeah.
For this property or not?
Select me. Who am I going to use?
I'd say, I'd say there's a long history of not paying and, and if the bank is out, there's no backup. And there's still a lot of money due regardless of this little bit, the 1,700 that we're talking about. So, I would say, uh, I would say yes.
Tell them?
Yeah. I'm in agreement as well, so.
Yeah, do we wanna say, though, if this, what if this is paid? What if, you know, we've gotten it on the 30th? So, what if she comes in on the 29th or even the morning of the 30th?
Interesting.
Yeah.
And that's issue.
Yeah, but now, we have a plan to report, so.
If the 30th comes and goes and she does not come and pay, means all excuse to be.
Okay. I think we, we need to make a motion and fill them in.
Okay, what'd you make?
Um, I would make a motion that if the seven, the remainder of the, uh, bill on this property is not paid by the 30th, that we do put a counter deed.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Questions from me? No, we can tell what's on.
Yeah, so you've made everything very clear. Thank you, Sam.
Thanks.
Thank you for being patient with many questions about this.
No, but it's a very clear track, so. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
This is Peter. Pretty, a good afternoon, I guess, so, I'll leave it up.
Glad you turned back to select board meeting. I hope this season was good. Yeah, so, um, I'm glad to be back at five because, um, I can attend and I do love that. Um, as you heard, the big truck day is, um, already go. We have confirmation from police fire. Have yet to hear from highway. Um, but I'm assuming they're coming. Multiple inquiries. I would imagine that's normally how it happens. They tend to roll down the day of. Um, and that's a community-wide event. The summer reading, um, theme is Color Our World. And that celebrate, that week we celebrate Color Our World with community. Um, we have the nature fishing game, the nature foresting land, uh, fire, police, uh, two loving companies, Brian McGoom. It's gonna be a great event and that is, uh, next Tuesday, uh, a week from tomorrow. Um, that is the kickoff for our summer reading program. We have 27 programs, um, planned in the month of June and July to celebrate summer reading. Um, and last year we started a commitment to do all of our programming for children outside. Um, just because we feel that that's an important push for us and sometimes the only outdoor time that a child will get during their summer time. Um, I have purchased a 10 by 20 tent that I would like your permission or I don't, but I would ask it as a courtesy um, to put it right out back, um, with fine with little kids, even if they're two or three-year-olds. Um, but, you know, I don't like the sun, so we're gonna stop that by putting up a 10 by 20 tent. I didn't realize how big 10 by 20 despite the fact that it's in the name of 10 by 20. It's the largest I've ever, ever seen in my life, but, um, we'd like permission to put that out and fold it up. Um, and I have a good relationship with, with Boden, um, of the highway department. And he's been wonderful about, like, kind of steering away when we have appropriate.
Is that going up and staying up for the entirety or?
No, we probably go up for, you know, like, a week at a time and then I'll pull it in. It's an easy up, but it's not the easiest way.
Right, no, cause the, the farmer's market ones are 10 by 10, but I'm just curious where you're going to put it. So, how that impacts where we put the market?
Correct, yeah, and that's how we're gonna put it out, our back door.
Where the market also goes?
No, our back door right here.
Here? You have a door, uh, this side, the bridge side? Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so that's where we do most because the shade is, is very good and it's not interfering with the market. However, if the market wants to use the tent, um, and I think Canterbury Fair will probably wanna borrow this tent because it'd be one less tent to put up, I'm gonna offer that to them. Um, but I'll be able to take it up and down, but with 27 programs, it's gonna be up more than it's down from June and July. Um, I don't really feel, because it's not a permanent structure, I don't feel like I need to ask the historical district commission. Maybe I do, I don't know.
They're, they're behind Kevin.
Outside, yeah, so, yeah, exactly. But, um, I will be taking it down and putting it back up.
Yeah.
So, um, we just wanna get the little lovers outside. Um, speaking of, uh, the Canterbury Fair, um, Cal and Mary and I always make sure we know when I think of my last town hall program, um, and July 10th I'll be out at the town hall and working, uh, like we do at book sale every year to facilitate that success. Um, I, um, have been working on the budget and Ken and Beth and I hashed out a really good plan. And so I'd like to start, um, Ken and I communicate all the time, but I'd like to make an appointment maybe next week when it works out.
Did you say Ken and Beth and you?
Yes, we had a little powwow last year about budgets.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, did we do that recently?
No.
Okay, just last year, that one I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, God is not good.
Um, but when I'm, I'm currently on vacation right now, hence my attire, but when we're both at work and Ken and I will sit down, um, I have formulated the 26 budget, um, and Ken and I will start working through that.
Great.
Probably next, probably not next Thursday.
Okay.
Cause that's big truck day.
Correct, I'm gonna be so busy. You're right. So, not actually, but maybe the weekend. Um, and, and Ken and I are really good at communicating. And, um, speaking of which, did Peter Galatas catch up with you yet?
He has, he, no, well, yes.
Okay.
He got injured and he's gonna be recovering for a little bit.
Oh, no.
Yeah, but he's gonna be all right.
He's gonna be all right, okay, good, because we love that guy. So, um, I'll connect with you again on that, um, just on your back. Ken and I have been working on the retool of the back gutter. Um, and I have to report that Total Security has, um, retooled the whole system. So, we are up and running on internet, um, and that was quite a deal, but I'm, I've got the money to do it, so.
Yeah, we'll save in the long run.
And we save in the long run, um, and that, again, is another communication that we're all on the same page and I appreciate that. I have every reason to believe that I'm gonna get an American rule in small libraries grade. Um, and at which point I will meet with Ken, because what that mean, I really wanted to get the grant money from the banks and have it in hand before we replace the heating system, which is a desperate need. Um, and Ken and I will figure out how we're gonna hash that out depending on how much grant money I can get, how much the library trustees wanna put towards it, do we need a warrant article? We've got to figure that all out, but I'd wanna have cash in hand before we do that. I've met with seven, um, heating and cooling companies. Um, the trustees have found a system after I presented them all to them. The trustees have decided on the system, um, with ultra geothermal and as a gift, they're all heating system.
Real?
Yes.
Great.
And so that was a reason that I think I'm gonna get this grant because it's a very sustainable heat system. Um, so more to tell on that, but I'll, I'll get on that. Uh, and other than that, all systems go. This is one of the things, we're a busy library unit. 386 programs a year, but the majority of them are in the summer, so we're, we're in high, so, that's it.
No, it's not, cause you didn't bring it up, but I will because, um, talking about geothermal makes me think of your new weatherization project.
Yes.
On farmer's market day when it was like 90 degrees outside and everybody was sweltering. We all staggered into the library and it was blissfully cool, but the air conditioning was not running.
Oh, wow.
It was just beautiful and cool and I think it was really, cause it really showed that the insulation made a big difference.
It really does.
Because we all walked in and went like, oh, this is great. We just said, no air conditioning's on and it's just a whole firehouse made of cinder block. It's, it's cool.
Yeah.
So, and that's why geothermal won't really work because it doesn't really have where to go in either direction to keep up the models.
Well, and, and thanks for all that labor work because grant work is not easy and then going through the other process to figure out an appropriate company is huge, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did not get 23 grants, um, but like Edison says, you make a lot of mistakes. So, Ian, so Steve?
We didn't know that you didn't get 23. We know you got 20. And, and, and never mind whether you got the grant or not, the, the labor work to fund the companies, it's huge.
It is huge, so, thank you. I appreciate that.
Big Truck Day, yeah, yeah.
Big Truck Day. How we feel about Big Truck Day? We all in?
Why don't you say?
Actually, it usually is and then they are all out.
Oh.
Color Our World with community. I know you're gonna miss it.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
John, get up.
Come on. T7's back. They had slipped the brakes on them.
Hmm.
Incredible. They said the dirt. They did.
Hmm. Can't interpret dirt.
Dirt roads is the name. 289 loads so far. We'll be continuing on the rest of this week and into next week.
Good deal.
Did you say 289 loads so far?
Yeah.
Wow.
How do the roads look, John Astor?
How, how's the road looking?
Yeah, yeah.
I think they look okay. They look a little sandy.
Okay.
They're all working.
Okay. What have we done? What roads so far?
Arxpo, Pickett, Laurel, Foster, we're working on Bath and St.
Okay.
Oh, Foster, that's where the trucks are going.
Always wanted to do that.
Uh, Borough Hill, the gentleman has changed the driveway to use the log yacht that he had.
Yeah.
And I told him that'll eliminate all other access to his property. And he's, he's been last weekend and removed a lot of material.
Well, okay.
He's going at it.
Cool.
Uh, Andre should be back at the dump and then David goes on daycare.
Hmm.
The dump, uh, the packer went down, blew a oil drain to the high-pressure fuel pump. And I was without aware, able to get it fixed, so we didn't miss a day with that.
Yeah.
Any questions for me?
I don't think so. You've still got, um, oh, actually, the question's not for you, so never mind. No questions, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Can we drive, well, I do have a question actually. Can we drive up to, like, Arxpo, Pickett, and Foster just, just to look their path, they're open, right, in Pasco?
What?
Okay. I would've thought we would've heard if they weren't, so thank you. Okay, thanks.
All right, um, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, just wanted to update everyone, friends of Canterbury Center. Got some activities coming up. Um, first would be the first concert of the season for the summer concert series. Um, and then it's a week from Thursday. Looking forward to that.
It's a big one. Same as Big Truck Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not a part, so I don't know what day it is.
Yeah.
It is the 20th.
So, it'll be the 26th.
26th.
Correct.
Yeah, from 6 to 8. Um, one of the things, uh, this Henry, it's also the July 4th, when we get, uh, some barricades to block off the center. If we could get those early, and I'm happy to pick them up if we get permission to.
Yeah, that's July 5th.
July 5th is, uh, for the job.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if we could have those for the concert series, we would appreciate that. And, um, I guess we can store them.
John says yes, so.
Put them behind the store. They're in the shed at the dump, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we could just store them behind the, in case you need them for one of the reasons, put them behind the store.
Yeah.
Okay?
Sounds great.
Um, one of the things, uh, before it asked me is the spruce tree. Um, we plan on having, um, you know, I get to sit on the south side of the gazebo and the spruce gives a great amount of shade. There's some low-hanging branches. Tree that I counted, if we could just bring them up above six feet, if that was permissible, we'd like to just trim that so that people can sit under there. Kids not falling down.
I would, so your problem with that is, I mean, you're, you know more about the tree and help them, but what about it then?
We gotta talk about kids and stuff and sometimes they get fallen down and stuff, so they're out in the each.
Yeah.
That would be painful. Um, so on the July 4, 5th, um, let's start at 5 o'clock. We're gonna bring back the parade, the children's parade like we used to have.
Oh, fun.
Um, starting at the parking lot. I've talked to, uh, police chief. He is gonna escort us up around the gazebo so that we don't pass the road. Um, then we'll have some adult supervision also front and back.
And you'd be now the 5th, the same as the 5th?
So, yeah, 5 o'clock on the 5th. So, around the gazebo, so if you've got bicycles you wanna decorate or palamas you wanna decorate or whatever. Um, at 5:30, we're gonna start bringing back also the children's games, sacrifices and tosses and stuff like that. Um, and then at 5:30 also, there'll be a reading of the Declaration of Independence. By some special guests, hot dogs from 6 to 7, thanks to American National. And then 6 to 8, we have conjunction play for music. And from 8 to 9, uh, we're just gonna have some background music playing at the gazebo so that people won't just hang out until the fireworks start. We seem to see that quite a different one more each year.
Yeah, cause the center is really popular.
Yes, it is.
Less mosquitoes.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Um, I think that was it, other than, oh, and I did talk to, uh, Herb, actually. I didn't get a chance to see fire chief, but, um, they're working to see if they have enough availability to have the trucks down there for a little bit, you know, the kids like that.
Yeah.
Really?
Yes, I see you.
Um, Kevin, I'm listening. Oh, I'm sorry, wait.
I'm just gonna ask parking for the concert series. Where are you guys gonna put signs since you're barricading off the center?
Yeah, so what we would like to do is, um, we're gonna have, Steve Hedy's working on all the parking, but we're gonna have some handicap spaces within that barricaded area so that they can park close by.
Yeah.
Um, and then direct people to all the outlines for regular parking.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and we'll be especially mindful of, I know, on Happelboro, you know, you get a lot of people who just don't wanna get far away and all of a sudden we get another pinch down there. So, we're gonna try the police to add a little bit, so we don't get a pinch point.
Have you talked to Ron Judy at all about perhaps parking where they use for the fair on there or?
Um, yes and no, around about 5, so, yeah. Uh, we were trying to see what the turnout looks first to see how much impact we have on the parking that we have. July, we, you know, July. July, yeah, June twenty-sixth probably won't be huge, although I hope it is. We're still getting out there. I think once we have that in the July 5th event, then it brings some trucks.
Yeah.
And you, I'm sure you've set the whole schedule and stuff into the new sets. Or Jill, something like that.
Somebody on board is asking.
That line's a pointy.
Got it. Any questions?
Okay, so that sounds great.
Yeah.
All right, we appreciate it. Appreciate your involvement also, allowing us to have a way, okay. Five o'clock.
You too, too. Thanks, Kenneth. All right, Solid Waste Committee. Rich, you want to come up and have a seat? I understand you've got a statement you want to read.
We'd like to read your statement, yes.
Yeah.
So, I dealt with Cal. Did a Google Doc so that everybody, the questions that you have are the point of the talking order.
I think we've all seen the responses, right?
Okay. You invited, you have invited the whole Solid Waste Committee here to your meeting. I assume you are contemplating as to whether to, one, disband the committee? Two, remove me as chair? Or, three, to seek some sort of common ground? It is my vote that by coming here today, it is the latter. I wish to use some of the time scheduled for the Solid Waste Committee topic to set the record straight and go on record publicly with our side at the start. And to specifically address comments made about me personally at the May nineteenth select board meeting. I share Scott's frustration that there seems to be a disconnect between the board of selectmen and the Solid Waste Committee. I've attempted to summarize these viewpoints and conversations, including discrepancies, miscommunications, misunderstandings, differences of opinion, and unsubstantiated. Oh my God, I can't even read that. Substantiated and publicly recorded slanderous comments. Beth reported that she sees the disconnect between the board of selectmen and the Solid Waste Committee as a process problem. The Solid Waste Committee summarizes it as a communication problem. If the board of selectmen spoke to us directly, this would have eliminated these progressive misunderstandings that have escalated to this point. The board of selectmen is concerned that the Solid Waste Committee members don't delineate the Solid Waste Committee's process for arriving at conclusions and making suggestions. Specifically, it relates to relocating the transfer station. The Solid Waste Committee members do delineate each step of our process. The conclusion to relocate the transfer station was widely implied back in October through anecdotal information, but the committee took the extra step and sought input from citizen stakeholders to weigh in using a voluntary, anonymous, town-wide survey to collect quantifying data. The data confirmed the Solid Waste Committee conclusions. In December, the board listened to that Solid Waste Committee data presentation and conclusions pertaining to the transfer station. And we were encouraged to present the Solid Waste Committee findings to the budget committee. Our committee was under the impression that the presentation and data were well-received. However, the Solid Waste Committee did not have all the cost estimate details necessary to present to the budget committee. Calvin and the budget committee offered some sound advice for gathering the necessary cost details. So the Solid Waste Committee sought to obtain factual and current data by requesting funds already in escrow to be utilized to conduct a feasibility and sustainability study on the current site. The final report should be ready any day now. The board of selectmen has accused me personally of not knowing about a mission statement. That it was my job to know that. As the chair of the Solid Waste Committee, I was told by the board of selectmen representative that there were no records or files of any type from the previous Solid Waste Committee. So why would I look for something that I was told that wasn't there? The board of selectmen then provided a mission statement. When the mission statement was presented to the Solid Waste Committee members, it was unanimous that they wanted to change it. There's no input from me, the chair. The board of selectmen has had a representative attend every meeting the last three years. The Solid Waste Committee was told that this rep had agreed to be assigned to most of the town board of selectmen committee assignments because another recently-elected board of selectmen member at that time needed to fulfill a commitment to his job at Fire Academy. We were questioning if our work on the Solid Waste Committee was reported to the board of selectmen. Were our minutes shared among the board of selectmen? And so were the minutes enough to keep the members of the board of selectmen satisfied with our process? Did they have questions or concerns? The committee didn't know about any concerns until viewing the slanderous comments at the May nineteenth board of selectmen meeting. Some of such are, the Solid Waste Committee is demonstrating a lack of process within the Solid Waste Committee meetings. The processes of the Solid Waste Committee were, is detailed in the committee's minutes. Did you all read them? The board of selectmen is wondering how we came to the unacceptable and irresponsible, those are your words, decision to relocate the transfer station and why our work on the Solid Waste Committee was not reported to the board of selectmen. The process was documented. The Solid Waste Committee minutes are not sanitized like the board of selectmen. No disrespect, Calvin. Like the board of selectmen minutes often are. Watch the video of May nineteen versus read the minutes. Two very different things. When I asked Beth if she watched the May nineteen video, her response was, why? I was there. You may want to see how you are being viewed by the town. That I, as a Solid Waste Committee chair, am an obstructionist like them in opposition with the board of selectmen. Scott has vocalized repeatedly that he is tired of spending his time battling me, not the committee, me, it's on video, and is very frustrated by it. Has the board of selectmen even tried to reach out? Asked for more details? Or even just chat with any one of us or me? These frustrations with communication can be easily rectified if one reaches out. Statements made publicly at the May nineteenth meeting by Calvin. To be helpful with the Solid Waste Committee needs to look at things like how to help with taxes, the future, things like trash pickup. Calvin, we have. We have investigated those things and more. If you read all of our minutes, our process is there. Calvin also said, they need to be more deliberate in what it is that we ask them to do, quote unquote. What does deliberate supposed to look like if we don't have any information communicated to us? Quote, they're like a bunch of six-year-olds. We need to be direct, cut the task focus down, like A, B, C, instead of A to Z. This is simply a disrespectful and belittling comment, not worthy of a comment. Personal slanderous comments on video, but not in the minutes. The board of selectmen publicly ridiculed the Solid Waste Committee chair, who's also a veteran, for holding a committee meeting on Memorial Day. Will, did you know? All of the Solid Waste Committee members were polled in the meeting to see if they had any issues with attending. And also to be sure that there would be enough people for a quorum. And nobody objected, or if you were willing to attend a meeting on Memorial Day. The board of selectmen and town administrator Ken has publicly accused me, the Solid Waste Committee chair, of not being able to work with Dave at the transfer station. A couple of years ago, Dave showed up to a Solid Waste Committee meeting unannounced and was a little disruptive. The issue seemed to be between Dave and the board of selectmen rep at the time. But I work well with Dave. I asked him to come here so that he could refute my comment if he wanted to, if he disagreed with that. The Solid Waste Committee is accused of being surprised and defiant of the mission statement as stated in the board of selectmen meeting. It was my job as chair to find such a thing. As stated before, I was told there were no files or records of any previous Solid Waste Committee meetings by the previous board of selectmen representative. So why would I look for something that I was told wasn't there? Board of selectmen specifically Scott has accused me, the Solid Waste Committee chair, of submitting a duplicate warrant article before the town because I didn't trust the board of selectmen. I attended multiple board of selectmen meetings seeking support on behalf of the Solid Waste Committee for a transfer station study. I kept asking for an assurance that would be moved on by the board of selectmen. But I never obtained that assurance, even when I asked the chair directly. So because of the mandated state deadline to submit petition warrant articles, the Solid Waste Committee felt it was necessary to ensure that something was on the floor for town meeting. This was a committee effort, not a personal one. Scott continues to belittle me publicly, this is all the May nineteenth meeting, by the way. Watch it, great end statement. Scott continues to belittle me publicly for what he describes me as, quote, taking it upon myself for walking around exit eighteen looking at properties. Even though I was there, or who I was with. Making a public statement like this is purely innuendo and disrespectful without knowing the facts. No response was received from the board of selectmen Beth when attempt was made to improve communication between her and the Solid Waste Committee. I sent her an email attempting to apologize for interrupting her during the discussion, which, by her rumors only, is a behavior that may or may not have been witnessed by Scott at other board meetings. Why am I being slandered for behavior that only the board of selectmen is offended by? I tried to offer apologies immediately after the meeting in question. She found it convenient to talk to somebody else. And if my behavior is so atrocious, then I ask, how was I elected to be vice chair of the planning board by the board members, my peers, and fellow citizens? If I'm so unruly? In referencing the Act for Resuming Oil Collection at the transfer station, Ken just stated that most other towns don't even collect it anymore. And his response to me that, that doesn't work, you've got to figure this out. His response, well, you can look for somewhere else to live. This was an issue that many town citizens wanted, and there were clear options for resuming this. His negative comments are unprofessional and uncalled for. I was seeking to fix the problem. Regarding the Solid Waste Committee presentation by Roy Plisco, the Solid Waste Committee and its chair are being blamed for allowing the presentation to the Solid Waste Committee by Roy Plisco. In essence, board of selectmen is accusing the Solid Waste Committee of using scare tactics as a strategy to move forward with relocating the transfer station. It's not true. Roy requested an opportunity to address the Solid Waste Committee a month before he presented it at a meeting. And he requested an audience with the town administrator and board of selectmen. His request was discussed between me and Ken prior to him doing it. And we were both guessing what the presentation would include. And we're guessing, water testing, maybe. Had to be about the water testing. It was concluded that neither group could deny the request, so in Ken's words, let it happen. That would be the best course of action, First Amendment rights. It was discussed in a board of selectmen meeting that the Solid Waste Committee received the report by email early Friday, May ninth. Before the meeting where Roy presented the information. That's also false. Members of the Solid Waste Committee never saw the report before its meeting on Monday, May 12th. We did learn, however, that Ken was provided a draft copy from Roy on Thursday, May 8th. Who disseminated it? Not Roy. Not the Solid Waste Committee. How you got it by email? Right to no request would find that out, I guess. Almost done.
Good.
Beth publicly stated that the presentation has been shared more willingly than other discussions by the Solid Waste Committee about moving the transfer station, implying duplicity to push the transfer station relocation forward. That's also false. There was no pre-designed duplicity around the presentation or its contents between the board of selectmen, Solid Waste Committee, Roy, or any other entity. And the one that probably bothers me the most, Scott has said publicly, again, in the May nineteenth meeting, you have said publicly in response to being informed that the Solid Waste Committee has no vice chair. So he is a committee of one. Committee has had some growing pains in the past. Members leave and join for different reasons. We are currently a large group, and in my opinion, are functioning quite well. Topic of vice chair has never been suggested before on the committee. Nobody ever, I even wanted to step down one time. And I left the meeting because I was frustrated, and they all took a vote with confidence. And they said, oh, Rich, we want you. Nobody ever wanted to be the chair. Members have been very vocal about that. In conclusion, I hope this message doesn't cause the board to respond in anger. And just ban the committee or eliminate me as chair. I am just hopeful that I have given you pause to understand, as Paul Pyrie said, the rest of the story. I appreciate the opportunity to publicly state my point of view. It's hard to defend yourself when you watch only one side on a video. And I just hope to set the record straight. The future of the Solid Waste Committee going forward is in your hands, and it's your decision as to how to proceed with it. It is my hope that you won't throw out the baby with the bad water and affording this group, I mean, after affording this group, may a thirty minutes to meet with the board via your invite. If you decide to let this group continue, I suggest improving lines of communication to avoid frustrations. How many times you said that on that? At least three times. And enable productive discussions when they are controversial topics. It is hard to fathom an all-or-nothing approach. Lastly, I feel that I and members of the Solid Waste Committee are entitled to a public apology from each of you for the disparaging remarks coming from the board of selectmen May nineteenth meeting as seen on the video, which is based on personal opinions or incorrect and misleading information. I don't expect it will be forthcoming, based on the level of frustration emanating from this board. I encourage you to watch yourselves on video, Beth, and everybody else. I know you're here, but you need to realize how ugly the outfits are that you are presenting to the town. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you.
Any other member of the Solid Waste Committee who would address the Selectman?
Okay, I have a statement.
One you can go on separately, though, at 6:30?
Yeah, I have a statement about the committee itself, and then I have a separate statement about the report.
Right ahead.
Before you begin, I'm assuming you get a copy of that, Rich, so we can read through it again? Because hearing it just once is... There was a lot to digest. Can you email it to Cal, please? Thank you.
So, my name is Roy Plisco. My family have been citizens of this town for 63 years. I've recently returned to take care of my mother and my family property. I'm a member of the Solid Waste Committee, and I'm also a part-time employee of the town in the Highway Department, where I've been mowing grass and plodding the roads. Since the Highway Department is also intimately involved with the transfer station, I feel like this gives me good insight into the issues being discussed at the Solid Waste Committee. Unfortunately, it also makes it a little awkward for me because it now seems like my civic role on a committee in this town and my civic intentions as a citizen in this town are putting me in an unfavorable position with the people who hired me as an employee of the town. I just want you to know, everything I do for the town, on or off the committee, is in good faith, and I have in no way expected that I was taking on an adversarial role. I have always understood advisory committees like ours to be composed of citizen volunteers contributing to the civic process in a semi-independent capacity. Our legally recognized role is to study issues, develop insights, and advise the Board of Selectmen. This was the understanding presented to me when I joined, and it has shaped everything I observed and done while serving. I do not see advisory committees as subordinate private staff who receive change management, corporate restructuring, and orders not to reveal information under the Board of Selectman directive. I see us as volunteer citizens acting within the right-to-know laws as partners in public service. Ultimately, we all operate at the pleasure of the public. As public bodies under RSA 91A, advisory committees are required to meet openly, record minutes, and report findings transparently. New Hampshire Municipal Association Guidance makes it clear that these committees exist to study complex issues and provide independent recommendations. While the BOS retains authority to approve or disapprove of committee recommendations, the guidelines seem to say that this authority does not extend to preapproving or suppressing committee content. Attempting to do so would compromise both transparency and the committee's essential advisory function. Everything I have witnessed as a committee member has remained consistent with the mission statement and the charge document. Neither of these documents were made known to the committee until recently, and even though all of our internal work duplicated, both are now being presented as grounds to question the committee's legitimacy. Concerns over process have emerged, and this is troubling to me because the impression I'm getting is that the proper processes we followed are being ignored or misunderstood, while inaccurate accusations about the processes are being presented against us. And now here we are, under threat of being dissolved if we do not say the right things tonight. This is very unsettling development to me. And the fact that concerns over process and the threats to dissolve the committee emerged only after I, as a concerned citizen, presented a detailed risk analysis about landfill contamination, raises serious questions about motive. I did not do this as an assignment from the committee, but looking into environmental and economic concerns is written right into the committee mission statements. Regardless of intent, the optics of this development resemble censorship and retaliation rather than constructive governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, please. Roy, could you also please get your...
Yes, I will. I'll do both.
Um, your choice. I can either read the statement I wrote or I can elaborate on the questions that you asked that I've answered in the survey.
It's up to you.
I'm gonna answer the questions, the survey question. Question number one. At the SWC meeting on May 26th, the Chair stated that the committee would not be taking marching orders from the BOS. My answer is, what I believe the Chair was referring to and what I support is that our committee operates with legal independence as an advisory body, as intended under RSA 91A. Our role is not to take orders, but to serve the public by studying issues and providing recommendations transparently. If that sounds combative, it's because of an unfortunate narrative that is being pushed that distorts the spirit of our role. That narrative has not only undermined the credibility of our Chair, it has done the same with the rest of the committee as well. This is deeply disrespectful to the volunteer efforts we have all sustained for years. Question two, regarding the mission statement. Do you agree with the original 2016 charge developed by the BOS? My response. The original charge was written for a prior nine-year-old version of this committee. Our group formed much later, under different leadership, and without a new formal charge. It's misleading to claim that we're ignoring a mission that was never explicitly assigned to us. What we've done is build a culture of transparency and diligence. The better question here is, why is the Board just now raising this after several years of watching us operate in public view? Question number three. The BOS Appointment Authority. Does the committee recognize the authority of the BOS to appoint members? My response, of course we do. We've never disputed that. But Appointment Authority is not the same as editorial content, or, I'm sorry, editorial control. The Select Board can appoint members, but that does not mean it should micromanage the committee's internal process or silence members' findings. As the New Hampshire Municipal Association puts it, and I quote, "The Board should not editorialize, censor, or preemptively attempt to control findings," end quote. Number four, Chair Appointment... Co-Chair Appointment, sorry. Does the committee plan to appoint a co-chair? My response is, I believe that's a decision for the committee to make internally and not something the BOS should force. The committee has functioned well for years without one. If the Board is suddenly trying to insert structural changes, it raises the question of whether the goal is to improve function or simply control. Number five, communication of success and failure. The question was, can the committee understand the importance of passing on information on projects that are successful or not? My response is, that's exactly what we've been doing by approving and submitting detailed minutes after every single meeting. If those minutes aren't being accessed or reviewed by Select Board members, the problem isn't a communication problem on our end. It's access and follow-through on theirs. Telling us you can't find the minutes or that you are unable to find specific items within them, as our current BOS rep has done on multiple occasions, does not justify attacking our transparency. That's not just unfair, it's irresponsible.
That's it for me.
All right. Anyone else?
Me.
Okay.
Can I get my...
Sure.
Megan, fourth line. Do I need to put the marker somewhere? The rule, okay, you all know. Some have a geared statement or anything. I'm very new to the Solid Waste Committee. I took a particular interest after Roy's report, which I actually, as an abuser, very much appreciated in giving me some insights into things that I wasn't aware of and was able to, as I said in previous sessions, if you all look into with DES a little bit more. But that is not what I wanted to talk about. Um, I, in an effort to find out more about what was going on actually with the numbers, I did a 91A request for any communications between the Solid Waste Committee and Ares. So my intention in the request was to find more information about what's going on at the transfer station. And I think because the keyword here was "what's going on with Ares", I ended up with an email that is relevant in that it had the keyword "Ares", but was... Let me find it. Was actually specific to something that you all are talking with Rich about today. And that is kind of this timing of how this report came out to the public, how much the Select... Sorry, not the Select Board, the Solid Waste Committee knew, how much Rich knew. I don't have the full email chain, because again, this wasn't something I was looking for in my 91A request, but it starts on 4/25, an email from Roy to Rich thanking him for his support about his report and attaching draft cables that Roy already created about the ground surface water testing data, and just commenting on the walkthrough with Ares. And then Rich responded that he greatly appreciated Roy's work in digging all of this up, the stuff he was not even aware of. He's gonna dig into it more and see what they have to say. He doesn't think it's common knowledge in the community. And then thanked Roy for his restraint in not bringing this up. I don't know what meeting this context is, again, because this wasn't... This was information that came up because of the keyword "Ares", not something I was looking for. Regarding yesterday, thanking for your restraint. That would have been the wrong time and place to bring any of this up. As it was something to do with the scope and parameters of what Ares will be doing in the recent contract.
It was a walkthrough.
Yeah. So, I believe. Rich said more data is what's needed here. Your information indicates and outlines an environmental issue with this site and clearly gives reason to move forward and get it out there. Thank you again for not pushing this issue with Ares. I'm sure Ken heard you ask the question, and it would have been hard to miss that you had documents in your hand. Rich then sent more information to Roy, attached his additional research I planned... Oh, sorry, this is from Roy to Rich. Rich attached his additional research I planned to include in my presentation. So, I ended up with this bit of an email chain that came in other information that I was looking for regarding numbers of the dump and the reports from Ares for the past, you know, since 2017, I think is what I requested, because they were talking about Ares and this, and I was looking into what's going on with Ares because of Roy's report. So I just thought this was important to highlight because there's kind of... We're talking about painting narratives, narratives that nobody on... Nobody, Rich, didn't know about this, no one knew the details, but this, from this email that I've kind of stumbled upon, seemed much more collaborative back into equal. And so, that's just information. And then just personally, I've only been to one meeting so far, but I don't see... I'm sorry? Oh, that you asked me a question. Personally, I don't see an information suppression issue here. I see the Select Board that just is asking for more transparency and communication and more detail in minutes. And, you know, from my... What I can read in the room here, the hostility seems very one directional. The Select Board, you know, out of the two sides of... Excuse me, what's going on here? One appears very dysregulated. The other seems to just be looking for some answers for clarity for the town. And on that note, I just want to publicly state on the record that I was present for Beth's treatment in the last Solid Waste Committee. That was my first entry to the committee. It was eye-opening. It is, you know, I'm also a Planning Board member. It is not customary decorum on boards and committees. It was outside the bounds of what is appropriate and professional. And I think if there was detailed record of that, those interactions in the minutes, the town would be quite disappointed that this is how we are treating a Select Board member. So, that's all.
Thank you.
I do address that communication in my statement. I can address it now if you want, or I can wait until my statement.
Does anybody else have anything, Solid Waste Committee? Steve?
I tell you what, Steve. This is all... Where are you? Paul, it's from... Please go ahead.
Which I was going to say in my statement, and I will repeat it then, but that was to let Rich know the subject of what my presentation was going to have, so that he had an idea of what was involved in it, because he just was wondering about the subject matter. So I sent him some information about that I was finding. And that was the extent of that conversation.
Okay. Steve, I'm sorry.
I have very much the same.
Steve, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, echo Megan's point that I think that has done a very good job as a Select Board Representative, and that she has been treated rudely at times, that the meetings interrupted. I'm personally very happy with the work that she's doing. So, just one last comment. Words of gaudy game. Why can't we all just get along? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Beth, you want to say anything?
I think not at this time. Thank you. I would like to read all the statements again and digest them. I understand the committee's concerns. I disagree with the vehemence of them, I would say. Asking questions is my job. It's why I join committee work for the Board. And I don't think asking questions about why things are done are accusatory. They're trying to find out information. And that's all I'll say at this time. Thank you.
Kelly?
I'm gonna read the statements and probably watch the video and think about it. I think no decisions or statements are...
I just wanna digest it a little bit more.
For the record, I would say I have watched the meeting of May 19th twice.
Yeah, okay. So I had not also planned on making a decision tonight on the future of Rich and you or the Solid Waste Committee. Come closer.
This is no easy.
Come. Come sit back down with my friend.
No, it...
I'm not gonna yell.
Any split is...
So I had also not planned to make a decision tonight on your future or the Solid Waste Committee's future. I did listen to the last meeting. I just treated her rudely. You just did. So, I don't know about previous meetings. I haven't listened to those, so... But I think that's part of the disconnect is you. As Megan said, there is a decorum at meetings. And to interrupt people and to be rude to them is not decorum. So I think that's where part of this issue is. That's all I've got.
Anything?
Nope. That's all I've got. I think we've set our peace for tonight.
I will look forward to digesting the comments, though. Thank you. They had a lot in there that I think might need to be answered just now. Not here, without thought.
Okay. All right, thank you all.
Roy, is there a question?
You guys...
Oh, I'm not drawing here. I'm right on.
That's from here? Oh, right.
I have a few slides.
Are you going to help or you...
Oh.
I'm gonna wait.
Is it possible? Or not? On here, and then that would be...
Yeah, because if you put them on there, then we can share the screens if people want to.
Okay, well, that's great. Let me just take a minute here.
Oh, no, you're the other...
Yeah.
The other rep here.
You wanna give them the word? Sample.
Let's hold for it.
Uh, let's hold for it.
So Beth, while you're trying to figure out the technology and things, I'll ask Edgar a question which you may, may not know the answer to yet. So, I picked up a card at the town hall, I guess at the library, and they're the, from CPCNH, and it's got the rates set for whatever it was, February 1st, you know. Do they print one of those cards for every day period?
Yes.
They do, okay. I only found one for the, for the most recent one that I was trying to compare.
The slides are just meant to keep me on track and also to give you some visuals surrounding the printing out paper. And I'll first say, thank you for trusting me to do this job. And I'm glad that worked out. Ken and I sat and I said, if I was retired, I could do this, and then all of a sudden I was retired and here I am, just in line. So.
It worked out.
Yeah, worked out for me. I'll also say that Edgar and I plan to do this work on a level playing field, not one as a main representative, one as a secondary. We'll all attend meetings that we're able to and, except for today, when things were a little bit crazy, we'll be more collaborative. And I think that we'll serve the town and serve each of us best.
There. Hey Beth, somewhere in your slides, do you happen to have a comparison of the last rates versus? Okay, do you have the, do you have all rates that we've done over the time?
No, I don't. I don't have all the rates, I have the rates from the last time for CPCNH and the last rates, the rates for the last time that were in right now, that we're in right now for the utilities. So, can you compare those, but I, I didn't, wasn't supposed to do a retrospective.
Okay, no, the only question I have is about when it was in, when it wasn't, but.
Only one time.
Yeah, I've got the, I've got the cards that I'm with the.
That's the only time.
It's probably not critical if it's not possible.
But then, the important part is for the board here to watch.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Bigger? Yeah.
And I'm assuming, of course, if you have all this, that you can send it to us afterwards, so we.
Yes, I did send some of this today.
Yeah, I did see, I did see some of it. Oh, actually, I did see some.
So, there are three things to talk about tonight. One is that given the current representation, the cost sharing agreement needs to be updated with a new authorized officer, which was Howard in the past. And we will need to assign a new person. The second page there, Edgar, shows the very top of the cost share agreement and the previous information that had not been changed since Howard left. So, this is a name, was a naming of Howard. I am not chair of the CCPC, I am simply a Vicanebury rep for CCPC. And if you wanted to assign me, we also need to assign the authority, which I believe is yes, no, no. And as long as that's captured in the minutes today, that's enough for them and they will make the changes as soon as I can provide the minutes.
And it probably does go to note now that at, at the last CCPC meeting, that both, that, and Edgar opted to become members of the committee. So, they're now not just the reps from the town to Community Power New Hampshire, but they're also a member of Canterbury Community Power. So, and I think we might have.
That's in the piece I'm holding.
Okay.
All right, so I don't know if this is the time to take a vote on that, I could put that in the, on the agenda there. It should be. So, one of our options, this is, this is assigning the authorized officer for Canterbury and under the cost sharing agreement with CPCNH.
And the authorized officer has the, is authorized to.
Uh, let's see, move that.
You did, that's not something that you emailed us this afternoon, is it, Beth?
What was that?
That's not the thing you emailed us this afternoon?
I don't believe I did.
You've got the rates and I've got the.
Scroll just a little hair down.
Well, it says the right thing.
Yeah, that was the lower.
And I guess my question is, are you authorized to, you're basically authorized to represent the town, to carry our decisions back to?
The only thing I'm authorized would, if I am here, if I am, if you, I am selected for this position, may I like to delay commencing procurement, yes. The others I am not authorized, but Ken is authorized under another provision of this.
Oh, so you wish to save me as first? And you're just additional to Ken?
Correct.
Okay. There was like E and EOP and an AOP? Yeah, okay. All right, so this is just.
It would be proper for you to, to make a motion to vote Beth into that position. You had to do it with Howard to that position, so you have to do it. And those are the minutes that will be recorded and that will be sufficient for the Community Power of New Hampshire to, to.
Make the change.
And is this, this is a different, just for clarity, this is different than being the rep to the, this is the other. Okay, fine. Then I make a motion that the board vote Beth LeGlin to be the authorized officer from the town of Canterbury to Community Power of New Hampshire.
So, I can add more?
Can we add something to it?
Yes, what needs to be added?
With the authorities assigned as Howard's board.
Okay.
Yes, I will amend my motion to include that Beth LeGlin will have the authorities assigned to her that were the same as Howard wanted that when he held that position.
Now, second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
All right, second topic is probably something that you have a question about, which is Canterbury Reserve Fund that we voted in at town meeting.
Yep.
Those funds have not been transferred, but I will work with them to get that done.
Any idea about how much?
Well, that was, yeah.
Yeah, I was hoping that I had that, but what I have instead is information about who's opted in and who's opted up. So, I don't have any numbers as far as what we have for the reserve account.
Okay.
Well, you and myself will have to work with Mary and the trustees of the trust fund. The town established the cap reserve account at the town meeting in March, so those funds will be deposited into that cap reserve account. The trustees have to do that.
Right, and, and CPCNH will have to have some kind of information to make that transfer possible. So, we'll work all together.
And who will have, and CPC and AH will be the ones who actually have the totality of what we should have in our.
Yes, they have that information.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and the real reason for being here is that this is the last select board meeting before CPCNH makes their assignment of rates for August 1st, 2025 through January 1st, 2026. The timeline is that on the 23rd, the rate setting committee, along with Edgar and I, will be needing to determine what those rates are likely to be. We will have 48 hours after that to affirm what our position will be, what level we will set toward the call for Canterbury. And then on the 26th, those will be adopted by CPCNH. And there's a whole follow-up that happens with PUC regulations and all of that. That's what takes the time between now and August 1st to get that settled and done. But it's only a very short period of time. Typically, we have a little bit of information about some of the other utilities and what they are going to be setting their rates at. We know Unitil is going to be 11.77 cents as their rate that's higher than before. We expect.
11. what?
11.77. It won't be until later this week when Eversource sets their rates. And though we have people on NHGC, a few people on New Hampshire, like Co-op in town, they are not PUC regulated and so they usually skew much lower. They don't have all the rules to follow. So, that's the, that's all of the information I have for you. I listened, thanks to Edgar's followers and the information to the last board meeting where we discussed this. And Tom was very forthright in saying that the utilities were lowering the rates beyond what was reasonable.
And sustainable. And sustainable.
And sustainable, and that turns out to be true. And they, they need to go back and ask for more money. So, we knew that rates were going to be raised. They are not raised as high as they would have been otherwise, they eat some of that. They also tried to put all of that money into the distribution side of the rates that we all pay for Unitil. And they lost. So, they have to take that into the supply rate rather than into the distribution rate. Everyone, including those on CPCNH, or on Canterbury Community Power, are paying. So, we are thankful, we should be thankful to the New Hampshire Community Power for taking care of that. Eversource is still outstanding inside. So, that's where we're at with that now. Rates are going to be a little bit higher. Currently, the rates for Unitil have been 8.306 and Eversource 8.929. We were slightly below that in February, but then CPCNH had to raise their rates because a power purchase agreement was passed through. And right now CPCNH rates are higher than Unitil and Eversource for the first time. It was not anticipated that that would be the case because they lowered their rates so low. It was very hard for CPCNH to meet that. Those are.
But that's true for the period that we're in now.
Correct, we're in that now, not necessarily going forward. They're going to try really hard to beat those rates. But because we lowered our rates so low, also, we're needing to make up money, make up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to?
Is that?
It is, okay.
So, it's 30-year-old?
You've got to.
I can see it, but.
Sure. Would the, the CP, would those rates be reflexive of the same percentage increase? Or, you can see the news, they've said Unitil and Eversource could be 12 to 18% increase potentially. Would those be similar?
Because we're higher now, our percentage will come be a little bit lower.
Okay.
Depends on how Eversource comes in and we'll try to beat both with the lowest rate for sure. And if we can otherwise. I think the reality is what's happened is that we set our rates really low when the rates were really high. And by doing that, scare the utilities and they are trying to, you know, compete, which means that rates are lower for everybody. And that's not a bad thing. So, we say we've saved the town so much money, but we haven't calculated then how far the utilities have come down as well. So, it may be, and this is what I've learned from the folks down at New Hampshire Community Power, is that they will be very close to what is Unitil and Eversource's rates. There probably won't be an opportunity for an adder, but there could be. So, I did, go to the next one, definitely won't be able to read this. I did go to the, I transcribed what Howard's vote was in December, June of 2024.
The Word document you also.
The Word document that I sent, yes. And I'm, I'm sorry that that was still dropped.
The blue one? I have it, I'll try to read that.
This, mine, maybe it would be easier to read without.
All right, thanks.
Edgar? Anybody else? I have multiples. Square it on the rate vote. All right. So, I'm just going to walk you through this rather than reading it. Basically, what I'm trying to do here is create a vote that allows us to flex what our, our rate will be based on how far off CPCNH rates are from the utilities. So, if they're significantly less than the utility rates, then we have some room for an adder, which would come into that fund that we've established at town meeting and be available over time for Canterbury to use for energy and energy-related investment in the town. So, being optimistic and hoping that we can use the same vote over and over again, I've suggested that the adder be anywhere between 1 and 4 mils, that's between 1/10th and 4/10ths of a cent. In addition to what the grant basic is, which is the lowest CPCNH rate. We don't know what that's going to be yet. But that it also be contingent on Canterbury basic rate being at least 1 mil lower than the lowest of Eversource and Unitil. So, that we would not have a rate that was equal to or higher than Unitil and Eversource because we have put an adder on. Also, making it clear that if we can't do an adder, we would simply adopt granite basic, which is their lowest rate. Maintain a 2, 2 mil adder so that people who want to be adding into that fund can opt up to be able to do that.
And that would be Canterbury at basic.
That would be Canterbury basic.
Okay.
And I've confirmed with CPCNH that we can do that. We have asked in the past, and I asked last week, whether or not we can have the adder added to all of the rates above the basic. And they think that is possible, but not for this time. And I will try and do that. Because we've heard from people who are at the higher renewable energy, clean power 100 or 50 or.
Yeah, they're not, they're not doing an adder.
They, they're not doing an adder and they want to go down to the one that has the adder. So it makes sense to have it. There are only a handful of people in town who have opted up to some of those. And they're the same people who want to make sure that their money's gone to the town. So we'll see if we can get that done for the next time. So the vote at the top reflects, I think reflects what I just described.
So this is a real if-then. And we can vote to adopt this, and it covers the contingencies, considering that we don't have a meeting until after we have to back the rates.
Exactly, exactly. And let me say clearly that this does not include both contingencies that Howard had stated before and you had voted on. Because right now, we do not meet that contingency. That first contingency said that our rate would not be higher than Eversource and Unitil. That's not true right now. Through no fault of a vote that we took or any action that was intentional, it just turned out like that. So the intention is not to be above the utilities, but there may be other times when that happens.
And there's still no knowledge about what the utilities will actually have to charge to make up what they were undercutting?
Unitil has eaten several hundred thousand dollars of additional funds from their shareholders.
Yeah, but that's not sustainable.
No, it's not sustainable, absolutely not. But that means that their rate is not as high as it could have been to make up the difference. We don't have shareholders, and that's the reason why we adopted Community Power. But this points out a disadvantage that we're at when we have an issue like this. We'll see what Eversource does.
Yeah, really. The guys couldn't know that.
We will later this week.
Yeah. So how do we, not that I doubt that you have researched this thoroughly, but how can we be assured that the logic is correct so that what you think will happen if we vote this does happen?
Scotty, are you reading it now?
Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it to you earlier today. I totally intended to get this out on Friday. Can't do that.
It's a lot to digest.
It is a lot.
So thank you for getting it and coming here now. And I think the question that I raised at our meeting the other night was at the CPC, whatever we are, Canterbury Community Power, was what if something dramatically changes that steps outside of these if-then scenarios? How do we deal with that?
There should not be anything that changes that steps out of this. Because it says that if it's not possible to have an adder, we would drop back to granite basic, whatever granite basic is.
Okay. And granite basic across the board is the same for all towns.
The same for all towns, yep.
Yeah.
So that is our fallback. And it may be that that's where we're at, but someday, I hope that we can just recycle this vote with improvements for the next few times.
Yeah.
And it's every six months?
It's every six months. So we'll be back between Christmas and New Year's, I think, or just before Christmas.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty lousy timing.
Yeah. But there we are. All right, Ken, do we need to read this into the record?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to just read this aloud. And Beth, thank you because this makes it easy. Whereas the board has considered several options for Canterbury Community Power default energy service rates for the upcoming six-month period, August 1st, 2025, through January 31st, 2026. Now therefore being resolved that the new Community Power default energy service rate for the upcoming six-month period beginning August 1st, 2025, shall be the Canterbury basic default energy rate, which will add a discretionary fund adder up to 4 mils, parentheses, 4/10ths of 1 cent, close parentheses, to the lowest-cost granite basic rate established by Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire Board of Directors at its upcoming meeting, June 26th, 2025. The Canterbury basic adder amount shall be the greatest of 1 through 4 mils, contingent upon the Canterbury basic rate being at least 1 mil lower than the lowest of Unitil and Eversource default rates. If the new Canterbury basic rate cannot be both lower than Eversource and Unitil, excuse me, if the new Canterbury basic rate cannot be both lower than Unitil, than the Eversource and Unitil energy service default rates and higher than the granite basic rate established by the CPC and H board on June 26th, then the new six-month rate for Canterbury Community Power default energy service customers will be the new six-month granite basic rate as established by the CPC and H board on June 26th. And the Canterbury basic rate for the 2 mil adder will be available as an opt-up opportunity for customers who wish to support the add. So I think that requires a vote, so a further discussion. What we've got already, all those in favor?
Aye. Can we get a formal motion in second?
All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal that I just read.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll keep posted on what it actually is. Well, yeah, please do, because that would be very interesting. So we'll be meeting on the, on the 23rd, and we'll have some information then.
Okay, we, when you say we, CPC, or you, you'll be meeting at...
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah. Our next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thank you Edgar and Beth for stepping up for this.
Be back.
Thank you.
All right, Roy, why don't you come forward?
Yes, sir. So I have a statement here, it takes about 15 minutes. Okay? And then I'm available to answer any questions you guys have about, you know, whatever that you know. So thank you for putting me on the agenda tonight. I wanted to be here to speak about a report that I wrote, which was brought up by Nick and I, and discussed by the Selectmen on the May 19th Board of Selecting meeting. I'm concerned about the accusations that have been made about the report, and there appears to be confusion about how the report was created and when it was distributed. So I think it's important for me to clarify this confusion. First of all, this report was not tasked to me by the Solid Waste Committee. It was inspired by events that transpired during my time on the committee, and those events are covered in the report. However, this report represents my own initiative and my own time and money based on my own curiosity, concerns, and frustrations. The only role the committee or the chairman played is that I asked to be put on the agenda, and I provided the chair with some materials that I've progressed so that he would know the subject matter. It was my belief that this was the correct place to make my presentation because it would follow the chain of process, starting with the committee, who would discuss it and decide if the Board of Selectmen should be advised about it. I'm still waiting for the next meeting where we plan to discuss it, but I'm getting the impression that the Board of Selectmen were advised about it even before the committee was. I also need to clarify that the committee did not have access to this report until the day I presented it. I gave an unfinished draft to the town manager the Wednesday, I think Wednesday or Thursday before. I think it's Wednesday because I work on Wednesday, and I was mowing the lawn when we spoke.
Day for May.
Yeah.
Where is it?
Okay. And I gave it as a courtesy because he's the one handling all the correspondence on this subject, and he's also my boss. So it was not the final draft, but I elected to do it because I wanted to make sure that he had plenty of time to examine it and offer any feedback before I presented it. I didn't hear anything from him or anyone in the days that followed, so it was my impression that the information was acceptable. I need to point out that this draft copy was then, apparently, and I don't know, but it sounds like it was digitized and provided to the Select Board on the following Friday, before the committee had a chance to see it. This was not the official copy I put on the record. It had unfinished language, some of the data was not fully proofed, and entire sections of it were still missing that didn't end up until there was a final draft. So if that draft is still floating around in people's email boxes, I would like to use whatever intellectual property leverage I have to ask that that draft not be distributed any further than it already has. I'm already kind of disappointed that this was what the Selectmen saw first, and this is what was passed, I think, to George at Ares Engineering. I don't know. It's my understanding that Cal has provided you with a digital copy of the final report in preparation for the meeting. I also provided Beth with printed copies to give to each of you, which I assumed you passed on. Continue with the timeline. After providing a draft of the report to the town manager, I then spent the rest of the week finalizing the report and getting it printed. The chairman and the secretary did not get a digital copy of the finalized report until a couple of hours before I presented my hard copies at the committee. And I want to explain what led me to the decision to create this risk assessment. The Solid Waste Committee had been facing a pushback about making improvements at the transfer station, and then later, additional pushback about the idea of relocated. These were both related to the landfill and the oversight from the Department of Environmental Services. But we were not getting a lot of the details we needed to serve our advisory function. The committee chair would make inquiries and then come back to report what he found. The Selectman representative at the time would also share what he knew. Unfortunately, a lot of the information took on the character of assumptions, anecdotes, and hearsay rather than certainty. For example, we were told that there were over 190 uncapped landfills in the state, and ours is not going to draw attention. When I investigated this, I found that the list of uncapped landfills with active transfer stations on them is much smaller. And when you add a wetland on the border, the list gets even smaller than that. I found that wetlands are protected areas in the eyes of the state and federal government, and contaminating a wetland can bring a lot of trouble. Those details appeared to add up to a more substantial risk than the original anecdote. To follow the proper process, the committee chair advised the Board of Selectmen in a PowerPoint presentation, and then later the Budget Committee, that there was a reasonable risk that the landfill could be forcibly closed in the future. One of the responses to this was that the state has no budget to deal with forcing landfill closure. When I investigated the state's budget, however, I found that there was both older line items and new budgetary interest in dealing with landfills. We were told that if the state was going to close the landfill, they would be forced to provide money to help, and the state had no money for this. When I investigated this, I found that there is no requirement for the state to provide money. Landfills out of compliance can be shut down with the stroke of a pen. I also found that there was indeed money set aside in the state budget for special cases, and there are several sources of grant money available if town supply for it. As the water testing results became the subject of interest, we were told that there were no problems and that all the wells were testing fine. Then we were told that there was one well that had a problem. When I investigated the test records, I discovered that all of the downstream groundwater wells were measuring over the standard since 2017, and the surface water had iron and lead problems since 2008. This led me to conclude that we had an information problem. And it would be useful if some independent source could provide some clear and factual information on this subject. It seemed like a critical question. If the current location has serious landfill contamination, it may not be wise to build additional expensive infrastructure, even if it's possible, because the site is at risk of various kinds of blowback, including environmentalist lawsuits, citizen groups taking action, or expensive restrictions and fixes imposed by us, by the DES. In the worst case, I felt the town might need to pay for both the landfill mitigation and new infrastructure for collecting garbage. At the same time we were experiencing this informational confusion, I was also hearing from the chairman of the committee that the VOS and the Budget Committee did not feel that we, the Solid Waste Committee, were providing enough details when we expressed concerns about the existing location. At the next committee meeting, we were told by the chairman that the process we needed to follow to move forward was to get bids from an engineering firm to help us determine what improvements we can and cannot make on the existing location. To me, this was doing things in the wrong order. Even if we can find a way to build an infrastructure on this location, the more important thing is for us as a town to decide if we should. And I believe we could do this using the information we already had available. If we decide we should not, then spending any other money on this location was a wasted resource. I did not want to waste money creating estimates for plans we may not need, and I did not want to waste further money actually building infrastructure that might become stranded in a few years if the location is shut down. This is where my sense of duty as a citizen came in. My family has been here long enough that I remember throwing garbage into that landfill when it was all on fire. I feel a special responsibility for making sure the legacy we left did not create a waste of resources or contamination of the environment. I decided I could be useful to the town by using my research skills to examine all of the available information and provide a report that pulled it all together and assessed the possible risks. This could help provide everyone involved with a clear picture so that the town could make decisions based on data instead of anecdotes. I was willing to do this as a volunteer. I consulted town history, I spoke with eyewitnesses, and I reviewed nearly 20 years of public data that Ares Engineering filed with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. I also investigated the relevant laws, budgets, and regulations, as well as reviewing professional literature on how wetlands interact with contaminants. My sources are all listed in the report. I did not contact Ares or DES directly. I focused on the history, the public record, and the risk assessment. In my view, it's my job to offer the information. It's the committee's job to discuss the merits, and as the VOS is prerogative to reach out for further inquiry. I learned that the landfill is under a groundwater management permit, which regulates regular water, which requires regular water testing, and it limits what we can do on the site. The town also holds a Chapter 108 designation, which allows us to avoid capping the landfill if the contamination is contained. What I learned as I did my research is that it does not appear that the contamination is staying contained, and my report provides details. Every chart, map, and data point in the report is based on public documents created by the engineering firm that the town hired. And yes, there is a conservative tone to the report, which is natural to a risk assessment, which must play the devil's advocate. Its purpose is to help us see what problems may arise if we invest further at this location. Under the circumstances, I am unsure how I'm supposed to assess the risks of wasting money and tanking the environment without posing concern. The most striking discovery was in the water testing data, where I saw the consistent presence of lead, iron, and PFAS in both groundwater and surface water samples. PFAS, as many of you know, is a family of synthetic chemicals produced by companies like 3M and DuPont. The ones we test for are known as PFOS, PFPA, and PF Hex S. They were used in many common items of the past, and they're linked to cancer and other health issues today. They don't degrade in water, they move with it. They're called forever chemicals. The PFAS sitting in the groundwater and the surface water of that wetland right now could be doing whatever it does for up to 1,000 years. This has prompted large-scale legal and environmental action across the country. These chemicals can be captured by wetland sediments, which might make them invisible to water testing, but they do not go away. They can build up and then be remobilized in higher concentrations during flooding. And as they spread, they can contaminate fish, plants, wildlife, and downstream waters. Maine has issued a no-eat order on contaminated deer around PFAS sites. In my report, I included tables tracking Canterbury's PFAS test results in groundwater since 2017 and surface water since 2018. The numbers, to me, are worthy of concern. The legal threshold for one of the PFAS compounds is 18 parts per trillion. In 2018, our surface water tested 23,000 parts per trillion for that compound. That's more than 1,200 times the state limit. I don't need to be a physicist to know that if the speed limit is 18 miles an hour, then going 23,000 miles an hour is going dangerously fast. I don't need to be a physicist to know that if I'm traveling at high speeds, it's dangerous without a lot of careful preparations. I also don't need to be an engineer or a scientist to see that the state standard for PFAS is between 12 and 18 parts per trillion. And if we're testing at 1,700, 3,600, 4,500, even 23,000, we're not creating a testing record we should be comfortable with, even if the state tolerates it for now. I don't understand the lack of concern about this from the town leadership. I don't understand why I should be accused of bias and fear-mongering for asking if we should be concerned about it. Ares Engineering, who has done all the water testing here since 2005, is now being asked to assess whether the site is suitable for future improvements. That means the same engineering firm that has monitored the site for nearly two decades is now being paid to evaluate its own legacy. Unconfident, Ares does competent work, but their job... But their job in the last analysis is to tell us what's possible. It's our job as a town to decide what's wise. I don't think it's wise to advocate our civic responsibilities to a private engineering firm. That's why I took on this task as a citizen volunteer. Citizens have the right, and I would argue the responsibility, to examine public data and raise informed concerns. It's how democracy is supposed to work. On May 19th, Megan Portnoy, who vetted my report, was here talking to you about it. She found, as far as I can tell, that my data was accurate, and she further confirmed that the PFAS surface water standards are very likely coming. And that's a crux of this risk. It is a condition of our permit that landfill groundwater cannot contaminate surface water outside the permit boundary. The landfill's groundwater is now doing that on the Conservation Commission land. In 2024, Ares Engineering reported that the combined surface water PFAS in this neighboring property measured 8,443 parts per trillion. The groundwater standard is 12 to 15 parts per trillion. If surface water PFAS standards are adopted, as expected, and the limits are set and the standards are similar, it looks like we're going to be in violation. At the May 19th VOS meeting, we said that we're doing everything DES tells us to do. But compliance with minimum DES standards is not a guarantee of long-term sustainability. We have been given special permission by the state to leak our contaminants into the water, but that does not mean we should. I would rather not wait to see if Megan's well has PFAS in it, to see if people get sick, or to see if the transfer station is shut down to realize it was a bad idea. We should be proactive, not reactive. It's worth noting that Ares Engineering has also consulted for the Bethlehem landfill since 2008, and that site still became a PFAS flashpoint with violations and public backlash. This is not to criticize Ares or DES. It's to point out that simply doing what is required is not the same as managing risk or protecting public trust. This is not about fear. It's about facts. It's about stewardship, and it's about leadership. I believe the select board cares about the long-term interests of the town. I didn't write this report to challenge anyone. I wrote it to help us all avoid costly surprises, shifting regulations, and possible irreversible environmental damage. I respectfully ask you to engage with the findings, not because I wrote them, but because the data accurately reflects our own history, our own testing we paid for, and our shared responsibility. I hope you've all had a chance to review the report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions or clarify anything in it this evening. With that, are there any questions? Or is there anything I can offer to sort of clarify?
I just want to say I appreciate your statement. I really do. I know you made the comment there about an engineer. I don't understand a lot of this stuff, the surface value. And so I appreciate you clarifying where you got the information, because a lot of that sort of was me personally wondering where it came from, how it was.
Yeah, and I hope you guys do have this. I don't know if you have a clue. Just for clarity, Ares received a final copy. Fine, I'm glad, because I didn't know that. There were the two biggest issues I found in our situation right now is the surface water site two. On the color map, in this, appears like it's outside the groundwater management zone.
Wait, what page are you on?
I'm on page 46.
Thank you.
There's a paper copy in the bottom.
No, I've got a easier for you guys.
So, surface water two on this, the 2024 satellite map, it looks to me like it's outside the boundary of the groundwater permanent zone. And that's the one I was talking about. Surface water two in 2024, PFOS is 3,680, PFWA is 113, and PFXS is 4,550. And the standard for the state is 15, 12, and 18. So those are very high numbers to me in surface water type test site two. And if I understand the groundwater management permit correctly, as I said, the groundwater in the permit zone is not supposed to contaminate the surface water outside the permit zone. And this looks like it is. And the only thing that's keeping us safe right now is the state hasn't made a surface water regulation yet. But if they do, that's going to change the paradigm for us. And that's why I feel like proactive action is probably worth considering. The other problem I see is there seem to be two different boundaries for the landfill. In the maps that I found, there was an older, original one. I believe this is on page 43 from 2007. This is one that the report says this one was done by digging test pits and finding landfill in those test pits. And this is the boundary that they determined was where the landfill was. And I would add that John has said that he's actually found landfill outside of this boundary as well, all the way over to the shed. And you can speak to that if you need to, John. So this boundary on page 43 is much, you may notice, is much bigger than the boundary on page 45, which was 2018. And that one from page 45 seems to be the one that's carried today, which is the 2024 boundary. And it's a much smaller boundary. It's only sort of in front of the building and the trailers. If you look at the boundary for page 43 and the page 46, those are two totally different sized boundaries for the landfill. And if the DES regulation says we can't build on landfill and we can't dig in the ground where landfill is, it's going to be really important for us to figure out the size of this, because the whole area could be, all the way to the burn pit, could be unusable. And I don't know. Maybe George can speak to that. So those are the two biggest concerns I came up with in this. Other than, in general, the numbers seem really high to me. They just seem, and again, I'm like you guys. I'm a layman in this. I'm not a scientist. But these numbers seem very, very, even in the surface water numbers, these tables with the red in them are the ones that I compiled from the water testing reports. And the groundwater wells, AD1, AD2, and AD3, those are the ones that are downstream at the bottom of the bank. And every one of them is in the red from 2017 all the way to 2024. And when I put it in the red, that means it's over the New Hampshire standard. And when there's an X after, that means it's a multiple of the New Hampshire standard. So, you know, you've got 51 times the New Hampshire standard. You've got 2024 test well, AD3, was it 88 times the New Hampshire standard? The standard is 18 parts per trillion, and the PFXS is 1,600 parts per trillion. That's the latest report. That's actually higher than it's been for that compound. It looks like, and they've all been pretty, I mean, I make it dark red when it's over 50 times the standard, just to sort of reinforce that these, and to me, again, these numbers are concerning, even if the state allows us to do it, because these chemicals last forever. They're not just going to disappear. Even if they attenuate into the wetland, they're not gone. They're just hiding to surprise us another day if something happens. And I don't know what the actual hydrological system is between Pray Neck Pond and Horseshoe Pond and all the streams leading out of Horseshoe Pond. Are they going across Morrel Road and Pickard Road? Or, I mean, I was trying to look at the contour map to work that out, but I don't have any certain numbers. But this is going past a lot of, this is sending water through a whole lot of area besides that one sort of quiet thing, as well as the fact that that wetland behind the transfer station is going all along Baptist Road. As you're driving along Baptist Road, you see it on the right console. That's the same wetland on Baptist Road as the one that we're talking about that has the surface water in it. So I feel a little more confident now that Megan has actually vetted it and talked to people and seemed to find that these numbers are okay. But it was disturbing to me, and it felt like it's something that we needed to bring to our attention, even if everything turns out to be fine and I'm pulling it out of proportion. I feel like it's worth at least discussing whether we should be concerned about it, discussing whether the state standard is enough, or are we worried about what may happen, you know, beyond that? I mean, the state is going to hold their standard until something bad happens, usually. If somebody gets sick or if a groundwater well has contamination in it, then the state's going to step in. And whether or not that's going to shut us down and force us to rebuild the transfer station somewhere else while also capping the landfill, that sounds really expensive to me. Or whether it's just, you know, it doesn't happen for 10 years. It could still be contaminating somebody downstream eventually because it's always coming out. It's always, and I don't have any estimates for like how much of it could possibly be in there. But again, these numbers, when I saw them, and I thought that when you saw them, they might be concerning numbers. And I understand Beth's point that, you know, what is contamination? Is it normal, or is it, oh my God? But the more I dug into this, the more my brain was sort of saying, is this, is this bad? Oh, my God! So I don't know. I don't know. I'm not trying to, maybe, like, yeah, maybe George can answer some of this as well. I'm not trying to be an adversary. I'm not trying to gotcha anybody. I tried to, as I said, I gave Ken advance notes of this because he's been dealing with the correspondence, and he's been seeing the reports and filing them, I assume. I'm assuming that you guys get a report as a committee every year when they do the water testing report. Somebody runs it by you and lets you know. But I don't know if anybody ever put it all together into sort of a historical context so you can see it all in sort of a, sort of pull-together format. And so I apologize if this seems like it's biased. I tried to include Georgia's statement. I mean, assuming you read the one that is the final result. I included Georgia's statements to me when I asked about the water testing in it. I handed out a public, sort of, what I call a public summary. I don't know if it's here. But it's sort of, it's broken down into more simple terms if somebody wants to just read a quick one-piece document that lets them know. And that summary says we've got options. We can keep testing and see what happens. We can build new infrastructure on there and see what happens. Or we can try to think about being proactive and working our way out of there over time. And I think the Solid Waste Committee's advice was we should try to at least think about the future, even if we don't do anything now. We should set up the capital reserve for the, there is one for the landfill closure, as I understand. And I appreciate you correcting the number. It went from, it was 100. I got my source from the Canterbury Plan for Tomorrow, which said that the capital reserve fund was $100,000. And I guess Ken updated that it's 153 or so. Yeah. I didn't look at the town. I would have been a better place. I would probably. It's worth noting, the Plan for Tomorrow, somebody accidentally took out a couple zeros. So it says there's only 1,000 in there in the Plan for Tomorrow. But, so, yes, I do, that is a number that I will take responsibility for getting not quite right, the $100,000. But I think Megan's point was that it's still probably not enough. And we might want to consider contributing that in anticipation that something might come along. And I still think it's probably a good idea to think about what happens if they shut us down. And I was looking into, while we hired Casella to come in and pick up our garbage for a few years while we worked it out, but that's expensive, too. Everything is expensive. And staying where we are, it may not, it's not maybe financially expensive, but there's a lot of risk involved in what might come down the road at. So I mean, the status quo right now is safe, but I think it's better to work while we're safe towards what might happen than to wait and react to events, I said. That's the best I can offer, I think. I'm not sure if there are any other questions or to answer things to bring up. I did try to include all of my sources in here for where I got it. The digital version will probably link you to them directly better, you know, than having to type it in. I included some correspondence where DES was actually saying that they were concerned about this or that type of extra contamination. They were asking for Ares to provide recommendations for mitigations and things. And, but they, there clearly, there's a record of. See, my concern is that DES is neutral, is sort of on the side of the environment and the citizens, not necessarily the municipalities. And if something comes along, they're not going to be our lawyers. They're going to be the ones coming down on us. And all this right now is us complying with them, but it's also us building a record that they could use against us. Anytime they decide that things are wrong, they'll say, oh, look, 23,000. And now, all of a sudden, they can start using that against us. So this is why I felt it was important for the leadership to consider and for, I mean, and I guess the public also to have some information. If the public doesn't, isn't concerned about this, then I'm, you know, I'm not, then I'll feel better. You know, I don't want to be an alarmist in here. I just want people to understand and look at it and use their judgment. And for our leadership to go through the civic process of you guys considering it and getting, you know, Ares' viewpoint on it, as well as sort of the policy-type decisions that we have to think about in our government.
Thank you.
Yes.
Finally, again, actually, you gave, I think, a very clear well reason explanation for why you did what you did.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, I didn't like feeling like an adversary or a fear monger or whatever. And I understand it's kind of shocking information. I understand how my pick on, you know, the appearance of trying to ambush or whatever. But I really, you know, that wasn't happening. So, all right.
Anybody else?
Anybody?
No, thank you, because I want to read through your statement again and then look through the document.
Absolutely, yeah. And I will email you this and the last statement. They're going to go on the record, just like with the minutes?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and Megan, you heard something?
Yeah. Um, I just want to clarify, I didn't vet in that last meeting that I attended, I didn't vet the numbers yet. I said that the DES database is quite wonky and doesn't have the complete reports and some, missing some years. So I said I was going to do a write no request for all of the reports since 2017. Calc has provided that. I haven't had a time, had time yet to go through and look at what all the numbers mean and if they match the report. So I just want to clarify, I did not vet them.
Yeah, I do have a folder full of all the reports. If that's useful to somebody, I can just give them to you. I mean, they're publicly available.
Yeah, we've got them, right?
You probably have as well. It is a cra, the database is crazy and it looks like there's nothing there until you figure out the right button to push and then you get the, the historical stuff over time. It's really, it's wonky, it is.
Yeah.
And from my conversation with DES, it is a thing that they're aware, and that's why there's groundwater monitoring. If it's going outside into surface water, they are constrained by what the state allows them to regulate. Um, but, so in, in the, in the vein of, you know, was something done wrong or we're not following the law, I don't think that that's the case.
No, and I'm not making that case at all.
Yeah, but the, I would agree with the concern, especially as in a butter, that if it's going into surface water, it's going into surface water. And I don't fully, um, trust this idea that it's okay, the wetlands will provide the buffer because you're just contaminating the wetlands. But I'm not the expert, Ares is the expert, so, um, yeah. And I just may, I have a question that I'm curious about. I don't have contact with Ares, but I would want to know if there were any recommendations not to remediate and why?
Question, great.
Yes, I didn't know if I'm allowed to ask you questions, so I was gonna ask the question first.
Uh, before we step away from Megan talking with DES, because it's come up, I think, um, in a couple of conversations, exactly who you talk to at DES, because it could be anyone of a number of people who may be more or less familiar with Canterbury, so.
Yes, I gave the name, um, it should be in minutes from the last time I spoke with you, but I found, um, in the records that I could find, it's Jamie O'Rourke, who's in charge of our monitoring, kind of thing. Um, when I reached out, he was out of town, and so his kind of second in command was Julie Spencer, and that's who I spoke with.
Okay.
Jamie asked her to call me, because I got my voice now.
Thank you. Mr. Holt, do you want to respond?
Sure. There's a lot to unpack there.
Yes, there is.
Um, let me just come up to the panel.
Please.
Because I kind of wanted to talk to you about it, but I feel like it was my place. And I, I didn't know, I wanted to talk to you about it, I didn't know who to go to about it, and I thought the committee was sort of the safest place to start, and I didn't know, I didn't extend, I didn't intend to blow it up.
So, I, generally, your presentation is very factual, very, you know, the numbers online, generated all this data, we sent it to the state. It's not that we're trying to be under the cover or anything like that. It's just, we do the groundwater management, carbon monitoring on an annual basis, in accordance with the state, following their rules and their guidance. Um, we work with Jamie O'Rourke on this. And, uh, the only thing that was incorrect in your statements were, you have worked for the town of Bethlehem, but it was in an adversarial position against the landfill in Bethlehem.
Oh, was it, okay.
For the years that the selectmen did not like the landfill, we worked with them there.
Apologies.
So, that, just to clarify that.
I was just trying to find an example of, you know, following and doing, the compliance alone isn't necessarily an stop problem. And I wasn't trying to cast any aspersions on you guys or, and that, and that.
I just want to make, we don't work with Casella.
Okay.
Um, that said, um, the landfill here, um, we have been monitoring, our project number is two thousand and three, so in twenty, yes, over twenty years, we've been working on this project. Um, and working with the state when new contaminants come up. So when we had lead in the, our first surface water sample, we stepped out into the surface water to look at other land concentrations. The town has fairly localized in that one SW1 sample. Um, along comes PFAS, and we start testing for that. That compound is very susceptible to organic, binding up with organic matter, so when you collect a silty sample, you get a lot of PFAS. And that's why you see the variability in the samples that we have, in the wetlands samples.
Does it actually disappear into the sediment, like, so that the water samples don't show anything if you get a clean one?
It would be bound up with the organic carbon in the wetland. So, um, so, back in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, working with Jamie O'Rourke, we looked at when this new emerging chemical came to be found on the landfill, as it's found in nearly every landfill in the state. Um, we started looking at receptors. And the state's goal, and we follow the state's goal, and town follows our guidance to follow the state's goal, is to maintain human health, um, protect human health and the environment. So one of the first things that we looked at was, when we found these in the monitoring wells, is how, what's in the surface water? And so we tested the surface water, even though there's no standard for that. And we found that it was very high concentration, so that could point it out. But we also wanted to look at exposure risk to the human population. Um, and the state requires the sample, a neighboring property, which is adjacent to the landfill. Um, to date, they have not detected PFAS in their well. We're to test them again in twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six. Um, for the off-site, um, samples that are in the wetland, we, we had to step out another time to further distances to, um, the, along the flow path through the wetland to see it, assess what is going out to Crane Pond. And, uh, sampling for that area is, is basically in the, uh, like, three to two parts per trillion. So it's.
I thought it was one bit.
It's very low, at distance. So with that in hand, um, we were able to say, hey, the wetlands are containing the contamination and not representing any off-site contaminant risk for people in Crane Pond areas. Did I get the name right?
Crane Neck.
Crane Neck. Um, and, and there were other wells that were in proximity, that were downgraded of the landfill that were, that we found. And we did a survey, um, in two thousand nineteen. The state has a notification process that if new contaminants found in a water supply well, and, or PFAS, they, um, send notices out to all the neighboring properties and then request.
Their six properties were notified, I think it was two thousand nineteen?
I think that's about right.
Yeah.
I got, I have the letter here. Yeah, October twenty-first, point nineteen, it went out to... Actually, it doesn't say. Um, but several, several, um, the neighboring properties. There, from our research, then the state contacted us and we looked at all the neighboring properties that had wells that were developed, or if we can on this, to find who had a well. And we determined that any other well that was, it was too far away to be a consequence. Um, but I think, you know, if, if there is concern for people, um, that are in the proximity, you know, they can test the well or, or contact, you know, um, the town maybe as a potential to get a, a well sample. But to be honest, what we've found so far is that there aren't wells that are impacted in the neighborhood.
It looks to me like all of the drinking water wells are actually upstream, up gradient, and that's sort of a, and that's keeping us safe right now.
There was one well, when we looked at the data set, that had tested, and they were, uh, they did have PFAS in their well, but it was attributed to their off-site septic system. And that was far, um, down Baptist Road.
So, yeah, Baptist, Baptist Road is up gradient above the landfill, and then which is, so the water is going past them and then through the landfill, correct?
Yes, yes. So essentially, then.
No, Megan, did you have a question?
Yes, actually, that was something, that was the only thing, really, that, um, Julie was surprised about, um, when I asked why there is only one private well being tested when there is an official list of nine abutters that should be getting notifications. And she was like, well, they should be, I don't know why they wouldn't be being tested, all the abutters should be tested.
Because they're hydrologically up gradient, or groundwater doesn't flow that direction, it flows away from them.
Well, a lot of these locks, the body locks are in the wetland itself, right? They're not, they're not residential.
Right, the conservation commission properties or wetlands, there's no laws on those.
Those are part of the properties that were notified.
Is that an answer to your question?
Yes, I, we are going to get our well tested. Um, and I did not know that you tested into Crane Neck outside of the wetlands, um, because I have.
Not in, not into the pond, but.
Not into the pond.
Um, if you have our, maybe it's for the, I would better map, um, this little one. It's approximately four hundred feet down gradient from the landfill.
Okay.
So that's, that, that tested, that's along the main channel of the wetland, heading out towards Crane Neck Pond.
Okay, so it is that.
The pond's down here in there.
Okay, because we plan on getting Crane Neck, Crane Neck is on our property, we plan on getting Crane Neck tested, and DES did say if that comes back elevated, they want to know. But you're saying that's unlikely, given that it's not in that chain?
So, so the other thing to consider is that this is not the only source of PFAS in the state. So, um, there's a study that was done, uh...
When you say this is not the only source?
No, I'm talking about the landfill.
The landfill, okay, just to the point.
Everybody's septic system potentially could have it in it. Um, the air emissions from far away could have caused that. Um, and what they found when they did a study in southern New Hampshire, this is a PFAS baseline study for lake fish specimens, surface water and sediments in multiple lakes prepared by DES nineteen, or twenty, twenty-one. Um, they tested, I think, twenty lakes in southern New Hampshire. We're sort of central New Hampshire, so south of that. But, um, they're at typical concentration for PFAS in lakes range between twelve and two parts per trillion. So, these are just background lakes. Um, PFOA had concentrations, I think they were on the order of, like, they are all detect, and thi, this is available online, actually, uh, there were a couple that were not detect, but then they ranged up to, say, eight parts per trillion. Um, so.
Would you, is that study, please, George?
Twenty twenty-one.
Thanks.
And then I have, may I have one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so to this question of, should we move the transfer station based on this? Um, have the levels been relatively stable or are they rising? Because the, the, the transfer station being there, it's, that, what's historically done is done, right? But the transfer station being there, if that is causing levels to rise, then that would be a justification for that kind of consideration. But moving the transfer station, if this is just already there and it's going to stay there.
That's why, I think, there's two issues here. One is the study that we're also doing for the town, for the transfer station. And that's independent of the landfill and the groundwater management, surface water management. And there really isn't any, they're both in the same location, but they don't have, they don't impact each other. Operating the transfer station doesn't contribute to the contaminator.
Have the levels been rising?
They, they actually have not, it's.
Okay, so that's, yeah.
If you were to do a statistical trend, they're probably neutral, saying there's not enough information or the time span hasn't been long enough to calculate a trend. Um, the first couple of samples that we had, the first rounds, you mentioned like, um, twenty-three thousand.
Yeah, that was a big one, and you retested, it was lower.
Right, and that we attributed to the fact that when we first grabbed the sample, it was a lot of organic sediment in the sample. When you take the sample to the lab, it extracts everything from the organics, and that would create a much higher concentration. Whereas if you were to filter the sample and just get, although we don't filter the sample because we want to be, um, the filters also can potentially contribute to the PFAS concentration. We, we decant the water so that we have basically clear water to use in the sample. And we try to maintain that consistency, to have reproducible results. The bottom line is the trends really have, they're, they haven't really changed, they're still high, but as you get further away from the landfill, the organic material in, in the wetlands tends to absorb that PFAS that's been out there for who knows how long.
That was my question, I, I, my research found that it can get absorbed into the wetlands, but then if there's flooding or disturbance, they can be released in larger amounts.
Carry the sediments away with them.
As it carries it away, yeah. And so it actually could end up releasing it in sort of waves rather than the slow trickle. And that was, that was one of the things that sort of lit up a bulb for me to worry about, and then what is the concern about that?
Yeah. Megan, do you have another?
Um, you said you were looking, your hives towards human exposure, if it's in organic material, fish, or the animals that drink from there are absorbing that, people that fish and hunt.
And, and that's where I think the state is not going up with the surface water standard because they're doing the risk analysis of what's the safe level for neotodes or that kind of thing. Um, it's a, it's a complicated issue, you know, the whole risk assessment concept. The, the way the state looks at it right now is, um, for human health and the environment, that human health is their main focus to prevent exposure. Because it's a new contaminant, there's not a lot of ways to manage that. And it's forever. And it's a forever chemical.
And it lasts so long, yeah.
Right. And, and so, that, and we have a number of these landfill sites that we've been working on, um, that's basically just protect the, the area around it. Um, and, uh, we have a couple of sites where we had spray foam or the HTRL foam applied in contaminated wells. And, and the only way right now to treat it is really to, um, treat the water that people use, so. There's no, um, interim or institute treatment for it, you can't treat it with some sort of oxygen or something like that now.
Yeah.
There's a lot of smart minds working on that right now, but right now, the, it really is just me, keeping, stopping people from, you, um, not, well, from making it and also using it, um, to prevent it from being spread in the environment. That's the general focus right now.
So, and to address Megan's, um, comment or question of a little earlier, our landfill isn't generating new PFAS?
No.
Whatever you're testing for is whatever was there, however it got there, which no one seems to know, but.
We don't know how long those, how long it's been there, presumably from the fire, when you had the, um...
The dump fire.
The dump fires out there. Um, or it's from material they had placed in the landfill?
It happens from decomposing landfill material, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so it's, but nothing new is going in, you're still dealing with, with what's coming out from what's there, in addition to whatever PFAS is coming environmentally from the rest of the world.
Would it still be decomposing in there?
Yep.
There's still decomposition happening, correct?
It, it, well, it's, the landfill material, my understanding was this, the last round was fire and there's no sort of organic, it's, it's ash and, and, and no organics in there. From, and from the, what we've read, um, we've never done any drilling on the site, um, but from the reports I've read, the depth of the landfill is above the water table. So, the groundwater is not necessarily flowing through it, that, the trash. And that's, that's why we capped it, to drop the water table, to prevent it from flowing through the trash. So, um, those two things, um, no organic waste and a lower groundwater table have sort of kept this at bay, the state.
How, how is it ending up in the test wells if it's going under it, though?
I.
Because water, okay. I've heard that PFAS can travel up to two or three miles in groundwater and up to fifty miles in surface water, is that something you can verify?
That, they've seen that in Minnesota. Three M plant had a release, and of interest, it went from groundwater to surface water and it went back into groundwater.
Yeah.
Very funny.
So I completely appreciate the complexity of all of these moving parts that you're, you know, using to make your calculations, recommendations. What would be required? What would be an alarm valve for you as the engineers, where you all would say, okay, this is, you have to use.
If it was in a neighboring well.
Okay.
Um, and it's.
Well, if it was in a neighboring well and you could determine it wasn't coming from their own septic system.
Exactly, right.
If you could determine.
And then, but the first order of action would be to put a treatment system on that carbon moving. Um, but there's no remedy, you can't, but you build a wall and keep it on one side of the wall. It, it, you, you die, you die from a lot of money, it's gone.
So there's no chemical way to raise the source?
No way to treat it right now.
So.
The only treatment technology is they've, they've been doing, or X, if you, you pump the contaminated groundwater out of the ground, treat it, and then you put the water back in.
I was going to say in terms of tracing, like, how can you differentiate PFAS from septic versus PFAS caused by foam?
The, well, the different signatures. The HTRL foam has more PFAS, um, which, and whereas typical signature of a septic system has a wide range of that, but more PFOA. Or another example is the St. Gobain's plant released more PFOA than PFAS. Those are just two compounds out of thousands.
So if a well were to test.
And we typically test for about twenty-five. So you can, you can get a general picture that you've got these three contaminants here and on the other, this other well might have six of these, but they don't match.
So you could find a correlation, help to know.
Kind of, but again, they also, as they travel through the formation soil, organic carbon will tend to absorb some more readily than others, so you will get, your picture will change as you get further away from the source.
Um, while we have you, can you speak to Roy's observation about the difference in the boundaries of the landfill?
Yes, uh, this boundary is based on a town of Canterbury dump land survey prepared by GS Jackson dated, um, December seventeenth, nineteen eighty-seven. He drew that out of plan, that's where we got that.
To that side.
And, and the other figure you showed.
You got the larger or the smaller?
This is the older one. That, that's the one we.
Yeah, the two thousand, what was it, seven one? Um, the report said it was, it was found, that it was from digging, digging pits, actual test pits, and see how larger this one is? This is in the two thousand seven report.
All right.
Um, and it was, it was described by the, the testing engineer.
That's us.
Yeah, you, that's what I mean, it was described by, not you personally, but it was described by whoever did it, that they did test pits and found the landfill.
Right, the, so, that, that larger is, is, is going to differ from this one in that this, this, there is surface trash and et cetera throughout the area. The question is, is it related to where the landfill area was?
My, I, I don't mean, my personal memory of throwing things into this landfill was that that was like all banked, that we threw things over, which is why when I saw this and, well, that looks actually more correct than that to my memory. The other question I had is about surface water, is that outside?
That does appear to be outside.
Zone?
Yep. That.
And is, does the permit say that we can't affect water outside the zone?
Yeah, well, okay, we have a number of groundwater permits throughout the state that have contamination that exceeds the permit limits.
That's what I read in our permit, I thought, I just wanted to try to verify it. That's what I read in our permit. I just wanted to try to verify it.
The, we can look at revising that. The, we would just include this other county of Canterbury property.
You have to make his own, uh, management zone bigger?
Basically.
All right. It's 7:30. I'm just ready. Do you have anything further?
No, there was one question.
Kate?
Yes. Our concern is that over the past 10 to 15 years, we obviously are seeing increasingly aggressive rainstorms. And I think that there isn't just the risk of PFAS, but also lead and iron. And granted, you do have a lot of iron in wells. But the lead and iron that seems to be coming from the old landfill, it seems to me that there may be some value in thinking about peeling. And I wonder if our engineer could answer that.
Treat the lead.
Yes.
There are treatments for that.
Right.
It would not necessarily remove the lead. It would just prevent it from being in the water so that the lead would be stolen. The state, I, to be honest, what we really do is rely on what the state wants us to do and requires us to do. My number one goal, one of my number one goals here is to be protective of human health and environment, but also maintain costs for the town. You can recommend a lot of things, but if there isn't a health risk in it, then.
If lead is in the surface water, obviously it's very easy for it to go where it likes to go. Basically, water goes downhill.
Right. We're just not seeing that going down gradient surface water samples. So then, and the state has not required us to do more on that.
Looked to me like the state lost interest when PFAS came in and they stopped talking about the lead and iron. As soon as the PFAS testing came in, they started going all over that. And the lead and iron sort of fell by the wayside. They were all very concerned about it before that. They were asking you guys for mitigation steps. If I could ask one more question. Are these numbers high to you as in your experience with the testing? I mean, because when I see, you know, 119 times the standard, you know, 15 parts per trillion, this is up to 1,700 and 1,800, those numbers.
They're, they're much higher than the drinking water standard.
For sure.
But they're consistent with other landfill sites and ATRL foam sites.
In, by state. And I mean, are there a lot of this happening in wetlands? Are a lot of landfills going into them? Sorry, that was two questions.
We have sites that have some.
So that was a big flag for me is it's a wetland. They protect wetlands very jealously in this state. And especially when we're trying to be stewards of the environment and all of that. So that was another thing that seemed to make everything much more complicated is, you know, because the other part of the state that looks at wetlands, looking at this part of the state is looking at PFAS and they're communicating. And is that going to blow up in her face when somebody else finds, you know? So I didn't make a tremendous speech, sorry.
No. Kate, anything else for you?
No, it's more, and I'm as concerned about the lead as I am about the PFAS. I think all of it needs to be something that we continue to really monitor very closely because when it spreads, it's too late. And the wetlands are supposed to be cleaning our water, cleaning our environment. They're already contaminating our, our job, isn't it?
Regarding timing, I, I, we'll have to guess. I mean, I went through the state file for their responses to us and there were only three or four since 2018. And mostly they were simple emails about, hey, we can't sample in November because of the rain when it comes in December or something like that. Our next big sampling event out of the landfill is 26, 2026, in November. And I think we're gonna, we sampled the residential well plus all the wells in surface water and I think every surface water sample too. So I would anticipate that at that time, the state will look at our permit and then review it. But to be honest, they have a lot of other, much worse case sites out there. This is a fairly low priority for them.
All right. Evan, you're not here for this, are you?
Nope.
All right. All right. Rich?
Related to it, in terms of, I swear to God, just here, in terms of any, I guess Ken had said that the thing where he, the feasibility and sustainability study, he was waiting for the numbers from Unitil.
We have those now.
And you have them now.
Yeah. So, so we're working, so that's the other side of the equation. We're working on sort of a cost benefit or just cost for different options. One is having the seller pick up door to door. Have transfer station, have the seller run the transfer station. Look at a new site transfer station. Buy a new compactor truck and just go that route. We got the quote for getting a three-phase to the site. So you put in a real compactor and a new baler. Get a generator for, instead, you can't see the generator is cheaper to run that than to buy the truck and run the compactor site. So those, all those things, we're in the process of getting those numbers together. Your, probably your question is, why do you see that? I'm hopeful that we will have it in a couple of weeks.
Very good.
That's, that's.
Thank you.
And also I sent the email out to the town electrician. I haven't heard back from him, but I sent him a couple of things, so.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll try and poke him a little bit.
All right.
All right. Thank you all for your time. Thank you. All right, where we go from here?
Well, if you want to go to, if you have a lot to sign. Evan, do you have something you want to go?
No.
All right.
Ready, thank you.
Thank you, Ford. All right. Two B's.
Actually, no, I got more than that.
No.
Yeah.
All right. So first item is, looks like an accounts payable manifest in the amount of $35,814.44.
Uh, so moved.
I'll second. All those in favor? Thank you. All right, next looks like a payroll manifest in the amount of $72,352.37.
I'm sorry, what was that again, please?
72.
Yeah.
352.
Yeah.
37.
Uh, so moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Oops, sorry, I can't draw that at you.
All right, next item is initial fund transfer to TD Bank Conservation Commission Fund from TD Bank operating in the amount of $13,998 even.
Ugh, so moved.
All right, anything to add on that?
Signee's change.
Yes.
Oh, and we, we don't need to make a motion.
No.
Yeah, we just signed. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, nice.
All right, next item is an appointment slip for Beth McWayne to Community Power.
Yes. Oh, we didn't have to, no, we just signed.
No, we just.
Edgar and Beth seem to work really well together and are.
No surprise.
Uh, I think it's going to be a good information to go from the state to the.
Yeah.
Back to the town.
All right.
For other projects.
Right. Uh, next is appointment slip for Edgar Repel to Community Power.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Edgar.
Yes, thank you, Edgar.
Um, while we are on the, for half a second, on the Community Power, we made Beth the EOP or Yay or whichever it was. Do we need to formally make you not the alternate anymore? You're the alternate.
Great question, actually. Maybe. Because I don't think so, okay? When you.
You appointed Edgar as alternate.
So Edgar will just replace.
Yeah, so, yeah, just.
Okay.
Okay.
I just didn't know if you had to make that official.
That's a good thought. Thank you. All right, next is a notice of intent to cut water timber for map 236, lot 17, interrail road.
Can you just add one thing to that?
I think, you know, we had.
And the last one was right here. No, Beth's still.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought recently we had another one.
But I think, yeah, I think we have.
Oh, thank you. We'll gather.
They're wanting. All right, next is an abatement of taxes for the property of Marla Campbell at 236 Old Tilted Road in the amount of $201. And the note from Mandy is corrected the unfinished status of the second floor. So it just reduced her, her tax ability. Everything's here. We don't need a motion. Just take the short end.
So she did finish the second floor or didn't?
She did, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's certainly, that is, right, that's how they finished second floor and it is in fact unfinished.
And it.
Why do they not need to?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was an abatement. Yes, she did.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we abate by $201 the taxes of Marla Campbell at 236 Old Tilted Road to correct the unfinished status of the second floor.
Uh, seconded.
All those in favor? Aye. All right.
Now, now we.
Thank you.
We have to sign it again.
Keeping us honest?
Yes.
Because the next one requires that, so.
Gotcha. Oh, this is a lot of information. All right. All right, so the next item is another abatement request. And it is from the Religious Society of Friends. And there's a note from Mandy.
It's like a meeting. That's just like a meeting. I was going to say Oxbow, yes.
Although they call themselves the Religious Society of Friends. So it says, the land and buildings located at 11 Oxbow Pond Road have historically been granted religious exemption. In order to receive the tax exemption annually, they must file a BTLA A9 form November the 4th. And it looks like they did not do that. I'm assuming.
They did, but not on time. Then we granted that for other, so long as historically they've been.
Yeah, sit down. I'll let each of you read the paragraph there. Gives a pretty clear explanation. Good thing this entered the fund.
I'll let you play one more.
So he's been, historically on time. This was, and then we have to, should we read his explanation as to whether we decide it's accident, mistake, or misfortune? I don't see his handprint. We don't have that. It's here. I'm just not seeing it. Oh wait, here we go. Here's the explanation. We've all done that.
I was thinking the same.
And there's been other people who've come to be for us who have not filed this form in a timely fashion, but have done it consistently. If this is the first time, I would grant it.
Yeah. All right, so.
Only if approved, please sign that.
Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion that we grant the abatement for 11 Oxbow Pond Road. And as Beth said, this appears to be a one-time oversight, so looking for a second.
Uh, second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right, so that's approved.
And we will mark it on our calendar if it's late next year.
And she says only.
Period, same quote, all right. That's how you know it's me.
It's the squiggle from there.
The size of that.
All right. This is bad in order.
Speaking of which, while you're putting things in order, anybody should check the library's strawberry shake, is it called? The science graph at the library?
Oh, yeah.
It's great. They post through, they post the. Or raspberry shake.
Right. All right, I think that's everything we've got to sign. So that brings us to minutes. And why don't we start with.
I think I mushed all mine in with everything else in. Most of the changes were probably from me.
I'm sorry.
We only have one set today.
Okay. Oh, that's it?
Right.
Well, that's easy.
Well, there's some changes.
I do see that. Go ahead, yeah.
All right, line 19, correcting $1,700 to $1,789 and adding from the 2022 tax bill.
Okay.
Line 57, adding to the end of the sentence that reads, so it uses electricity to run the hydraulics instead of needing to keep the engine running. Um, then there's a radical one further down the page.
Yeah.
On line 103 is an existential. Stray from the sentence, the area encarnated CES often gets backed up and changing it to, the traffic is a problem along Vampus Road as you approach CES from the center. There's no line of sight when trying to pass line of cars waiting to enter the school property.
Okay.
Uh, line one-ten, uh, crossing out HVAC and changing it to mini-split slash heat pumps. Uh, line one-fourteen, changing it to read, "And see what improvements have been slash could be made." Uh, line one-forty-five, changing unnecessary to not advised.
Okay.
Line one-seventy-five, adding, um, "The solid waste committee's grievances with her and with commentary from the select board at five nineteen meeting." Um, line one-eighty-six, changing the sentence to be unable to find evidence of how the solid waste committee changed their focus from operating the transfer station to their current focus on relocating and building new transfer station. And that is it.
Agreed. Only for both should we accept as amended?
I will second that.
All those in favor, alright?
Aye.
And we can keep these, right?
Yes, you can.
Alright. Alright, um, that's that, so can I leave or do business?
Yes. This is a letter, uh, we got a request from, um, the attorneys representing, uh, the farm at the end of West Road. They are in the process of trying to buy the property next door, the brick house at one sixty, uh, West Road. Um, similar to when they refinanced, when Brooklyn Farm refinanced. Because of the grant from NOAA, they need, uh, consent from the town that they buy this property. So I have a letter here, um, I have a tax card for that property, if anybody's interested in looking at it. Um, I did talk to Mandy, who visited the property a little while ago, just a couple months ago, a month ago. Um, the building is semi-habitable, does have power, water, and sewer. However, it's been under construction, interior got part of it. The upstairs, uh, suffered some significant fire damage several years ago. It has not been repaired, um, but that's just, uh, I think depending on, um, if the sale goes through, then I guess we would ask uh, Brooklyn Farm what the intent is for the building and make sure they seek all prevents and make sure it's up. So I have a-
Well, yeah, we're definitely, from the amount of damage that you described and the part of it that's being lived in, I think we want to make very sure that this is-
So, I have a letter here, this is, uh, drafted, and, uh, for you guys to sign.
Okay.
But that, any concerns we might have about it being inspected before people actually move in and live in is separate from this?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
You're just, because of the, you're being, you're involved because of the grant and during, after the sale and the, and the, uh, conservation, if that's possible.
This is actually not the house I thought it was, this is the one that's really at the end, right in the front.
Very end of the lot, I thought.
That's correct.
Yeah, I recognize the end of it.
Yes, yes.
That's very unique.
It is. I hope, I wish-
You guys see, I think if you look at it, it's built in seventeen ninety.
Yeah, that's what you said. I wish they would, uh, it would be nice if that had, would be restored, but-
Yeah, seventeen ninety, yeah.
Nope.
That would not have guessed it.
If the work's involved in that, it'd be crazy. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yep. Alright, there's that, alright. Uh, anybody got any other new business?
I went to the school board meeting.
I can't, until I'm on the agenda, I can't address our questions. If that makes sense.
I understand, I'm there.
Good.
It's on their agenda, so, uh, I did go, I attended it, got the, got the highlights, it's what comes equipped me, it's only thirty, thirty minutes.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, other than that, that's pretty much it. So next, next meeting in Canterbury will be in August.
Yeah.
So I'll attend that one with our questions and concerns, and I'll be on the agenda.
Very good, okay, sounds good, thank you. Uh, on to old business code conduct.
Realizing I'm putting it out, you guys, bye.
Do you want me to give you?
Do we have it?
Put it out?
I printed it out, I printed it out on the call.
Oh wait, where we got it, Richter, right here. Not that long.
No, I think I made a few more changes
Um, oh, okay.
Today.
Do you wanna, do you wanna send it to us out again electronically to highlight the changes that we should be aware of? Would that be more, um-
Do you, cause I can, I have the changes here.
Oh, alright.
This is the last draft, about six-two.
Hold on, if you give me half a second to pull it up, because I think I've got all my changes here, and then I sat with Cal today and looked at it quickly, so, um, you sent-
I definitely sent you, you know, this one this afternoon. Five, that doesn't-
No, I sent you five, I was sending six.
Right, this is where you sent it the other day.
I sent the comments. Uh, I made some more changes today.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay.
And I practically printed that out.
Okay, alright.
So-
Alright.
Alright.
Maybe, I just electronically sent it, I would like to know your-
Yeah, I, I mean, most of the changes that I saw were changing they to you, and, um-
Yeah, that was one.
And then, wait, wait permission, uh, on page three, wait for all information, do not make statements. Again, changing they to you, and then accuse yourself, not themselves. And then combining, all board chairs have responsibility to, and then combine one, two, three, and four together, it'll be one sentence.
Okay. And then made a whole bunch more changes, edit, I mean comments. On top of that. I'm sorry, you asked for comments, you get comments.
Don't ask the comments.
You want me to- You want to hear my, go, cause-
No, we'll do it one more time.
One more time.
Yeah.
Cause I don't want to take up-
Sorry.
No worries.
Go ahead and ask.
We'll come back to it.
You don't want to know.
I will, I will ask in the, um, I guess, essence of, um, time management.
Yeah.
This is a living document.
Okay.
We can change that anytime.
Okay.
I think it's important that we get this out as soon as possible.
I agree.
That, that's all.
Can we, uh, my changes, I don't believe were substantive, and I want to look through the entirety of the document, I can't see having anything else. So if it all goes out and we look at it, can we, can we just all send our commentary back to you or Cal and, and go from there, or do we have to-
Cannot make a decision via email.
No.
To, to prove it.
Okay.
You can send your com-
So we can do that on our-
You can send your comments individually back to myself and Cal to help us re-edit it. But any decision on the final product has to come out of the meeting.
I give you permission not to send it to me, I've made all my comments, and we can approve at the-
Next meeting.
The next meeting, I think we should put on the agenda to approve, not just to-
Right. Agreed, yeah, as we're all known.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Alright, two more weeks.
Timely, very timely.
Alright, yeah. Um, alright, so Shell Meeting House Road.
So, um, at the meeting in May, uh, or April, I guess it was May, we talked about Shell Meeting House Road.
Yeah.
Um, I guess it was late by actually, when the first of May, we talked about it again. Um, Calvin had some questions, he was gonna do some more research on it.
Yeah.
Um, talked about talking with the planning board and putting up. Uh, I received another call from the gentleman that had complained the last time about the locked gate. Um, and at the meeting in May, I guess, no, in, at the meeting in, on April twenty-first, you instructed me to write a letter asking the, uh, Mees to remove the lock.
Yeah.
Uh, I denied a lock after I talked to Calvin, we talked about it again in May. Um, again, I received another complaint from the gentleman, so I drafted a letter to the Mees. Um, and it says, "The town has been made aware of a locked gate preventing access to Shell Meeting House Road at the intersection of Shaker Road. Our records indicate that Shell Meeting House Road is discontinued at the town meeting in nineteen twenty-eight. However, we have no records of property owners being notified of the discontinuance. Our town council recommended to the board of selection in two thousand and sixteen that if we couldn't find appropriate records that indicate all legal requirements that were followed, the town should consider any and all discontinued roads as town roads. The board of selection have followed this advice. The board of selection are working on this issue as it affects multiple roads. Until this matters is all, the town asks the lock be removed. The alternative is for you to provide proof that all conditions that will allow the road to be discontinued have been met. Please feel free to contact me with any questions." Um, I signed it, asking if that's okay, if I can send that out to the Mees. Um, again, it's, I think it's following, uh, past precedent where if you look at Wythe Road, there was a question whether it's private, whether it was not. You've got, um, proof to your satisfaction that it was a private road. So if the Mees can show you proof that this was a discontinued road and all legal procedures were followed, then you can say, yes, it was discontinued. Um, I talked to Calvin about this, and I think, um, it would probably be the easiest and most efficient thing to do would be to bring up four or five of these roads at town meeting to reaffirm that they are discontinued. And, and using the ones that are, um, on our town map as listed discontinued, and then work our way through others as they, as, as we get the priority ones taken there.
Yeah.
So, makes sense to me.
My, my only comment to Ken when we, um, when we talked about this letter this morning was that at that time, take it painfully clear what discontinuance means. Cause I don't think people, people will vote one way or the other, not really understanding it. And if we send letters to a butters or to anything like that, that we need to make sure that all the, the references are, are very clear. Just so nobody misunderstands and then sends later, you know, that they weren't told.
Right.
Um, and then it's part of the record too, what does this mean, what do you agree to?
Yeah.
Um, and that's all, I think, otherwise, I think that's a perfectly, um, good way to, I to deal with that, really. And the complaints about the game.
We will make sure that this is part of our preparation for town meeting in two thousand and twenty-six.
If you would, start putting the five years for twenty twenty-six together now, that would be page one, thank you very much.
All you would need for, I guess, supportive documents would be a deed reflecting it. It could be something as simple as that, right?
That would be, that's what Calvin would be about. Cause if somebody's deed reflects that they have access via this discontinued road, then that would show that, that that was, the steps were followed.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I think we're all agreed?
Yes.
Okay.
And as I mentioned, you can, you write a good letter.
Yes, he does. That's practice, I guess.
He does.
Where does one take a business writing?
Of course, I think you learn in the job with-
Uh, I take, uh, part of my certified public manager class, of course.
Okay.
Was, uh, business writing.
Yeah. There you go. Alright, uh, I think that brings us to the sale of town property.
Yes.
Two twenty, lot two, Brian the Blue.
Yes, so, we, uh, had a request from the title company, have some title, uh, they had some concerns about the deed. Um, we sent them all the information we have. They called us back, uh, and said that, um, some of the letters that were signed by the heirs, cause we had to sign, send letters out to all the heirs and have them notarized. Some were not dated, some were not signed correctly, some of the notary didn't sign them. So there was some problems with those. Um, but the biggest problem is that, um, the person that owned the property, when they passed away, they were in Massachusetts, they were resident in Massachusetts, and there's no documentation that probate was done. And this property was not part of a trust that they had, so probate had to be done, and there's no, um, they, they went through all the records that they could find for probate in Massachusetts, and there's no probate on this person. So, um, the the option is for the sale of this property, that the town either sells it and knowing that the title is not clear, the town can spend the money to quiet the title. Um, one of the costs of, the cost of making a title quiet is between five and ten thousand dollars, it could take up to six months. Um, the realtor has, uh, made a potential offer that if the board of selection reduced the sale price of the property by up to ten thousand dollars, and again, your decision between five and ten thousand, um, that the potential buyer might still purchase the property and use that reduction in cost to fund a quiet title and such. So, um, I, they, they, uh, the realtor was going to ask Brian if that was reasonable, and they haven't, I haven't gotten anything to say, but that's an offer or not. That was one of the offers that we made. I, I did tell them that I would ask you guys about it, and if you thought that you could potentially do that, then I would make that offer and say, yes, it's likely agreeable, or no, it's likely not agreeable.
I would agree that. Uh, it would, I would want to know a little bit more clearly whether it's five or ten.
And that's what I, I told the realtor that, we would have to have some kind of settlement.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we can investigate that our own, yeah.
And then just kind of via roll the dice, depending on litigation and who they found protested, I mean, it could be a thirty thousand dollar lawsuit to quiet.
And that's the thing, it's litigation, it's not just pulling a paper, that's why it takes up to six months to potentially do. It has to be listed, has to be, um, posted in the newspaper, you know, all, there's a, there's a, there's a process.
Yeah.
But is the, is the, thus, I guess I'm not quite clear, I mean, the, the, um, the property was left in a disorganized fashion and, you know, things weren't timed or whatever, but why do we have to quiet the title to sell it as opposed to-
So we don't, we can sell it as is.
Oh, we don't, okay, it would be, okay, that's what I thought.
Right, we don't have to quiet the title. We can sell it as is-
And the bribe would have to worry about it.
And purchaser knows that it might be a odd, odd, a problem with it, and it's up to them to clear up the problem.
Got it. Yeah, I, I still, if we have a firm number, because this is still, what, what, even if we reduce the price by ten thousand dollars, what does the town stand to profit from the sale of this piece of property?
Profit is a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
For, for property that was gifted to the town, so-
Could it get to back of the tax rules?
Yeah. So- No one else wanted it, and-
But the town did not want to take it
Yeah.
in the first place.
Right.
But the family said that they were just gonna stop paying taxes on it.
Yeah, so-
The town would have ended up with it anyway, so that's why the board of selection agreed to, to take the gift.
Yeah.
Cause it was easier to do it that way, we thought.
Yeah.
Than to take it by taxes.
I still say if we can get a firm number, it'd certainly be worth our while to, to consider that, but-
Or do we just reduce the price and sell it as is?
I'm just, morally, I'd feel horrible if they turned into something bigger than it was. But I know that's, as the, as the purchaser, that's the risk you're taking, right, with that proposal, I just-
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I think that, um, any, any purchaser, you know, if they're aware of the potential problems, then that's up to them whether they decide to take a chance or not. And that's what the realtor expressed to me, and I, I said, yeah.
I mean, we could-
But the town isn't gonna spend ten thousand dollars to quiet the title, a piece of land it's given to us. And we're not, you know, I wouldn't think, I mean, unless you guys want to go that.
No, I do not believe so, but it seems, I mean, it still seems like, um, it seems like, uh, we're not, we could just sell it and say, forget, you know, you bear the cost, we're still gonna get the original price, but I think, you know, we're, we're, we're doing a, a duty to a, a citizen who's going to be buying a piece of property that otherwise the town can't use, and he can, and will, will be willing to bend a little bit for that. But, again, I wouldn't just say ten thousand dollars if it's gonna be five. Not that, quite that generous.
Okay, so I will mitigate back to them that you're a realtor negotiations, and you need to come up with a firm number, yeah.
That's, that's okay, my honest.
Mm-hmm. I think that's it.
It seems reasonable.
Yes, I agree. Alright, and-
All right, and, uh, two other things that didn't make the list, I guess this should have been on, well, I guess this is old business. Uh, you got a thank you letter from Casa.
Oh.
No, good.
Very nice letter, um, I have it here, I'll look at it. And then the last thing that I have is, uh, you all received a copy of the P and L, the office.
Got it.
Um, I went through it, there are some budgets that are concerned, however, um, I, I think, you know, if you, I, I guess I would ask you to look at it.
Yeah.
And if you have any questions, shoot me an email.
Yeah.
Um, and I'll explain it.
Okay.
And just do it individually, uh, I will send out an email either tomorrow or, um, Wednesday on what I found and concerns I might have.
Okay.
Um, and some explanations.
Yeah.
Um, there's, you know, some, some of the, the, uh, Stanley maintenance is over, and, um, so is missile building maintenance. So I'll send out some explanations on that.
Great.
Can you see saving on all of us in the address of the buyer?
Yep.
And this is, this is what we got tonight, I'm just, I've got like all these things shoved in here, this is January first, June fourth, yes, that's tonight's.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
All righty.
All right.
I put it in there.
And I have meeting tomorrow, Scott, are we gonna be there tomorrow at ten thirty tomorrow?
Yeah, that's cool, oh, yeah, actually, that was the one thing I wanted to confirm with you, was the ten thirty.
Ten thirty tomorrow morning, I'll be there.
And that's to, um, go see Conca Beagle?
That, yeah, three, six, seven, Shaker Road.
Yeah.
Zone, yeah.
Yeah, I'll carry my calendar, so.
Okay, and then, um, third, no, when is the, I've got it in here, but just so I make sure, the, um, the award ceremony at the school is.
Thursday, eight forty-five.
Thursday, eight forty-five, Thursday, I keep going to say Tuesday, but I know it's Thursday.
Cause that's big truck day or something.
Yep, right, Thursday, forty-five AM.
No, Thursday, that big truck day is the next.
Right.
All week, yeah, yeah, Thursday, that's when everything happens, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll have a concert.
I've got it eight thirty AM, but it's eight forty-five.
Eight forty-five, they, yeah.
I'm gonna put it at eight thirty, cause I don't.
If you don't have parking.
Yeah, well, yeah, that is gonna be, I'm gonna park at the firehouse and walk around.
Yeah.
Works.
No, we don't walk to the south or east. Thank you.
All right, what do you think, Thursday? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to a chairman.
I think I would second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Um, aye.
Aye, we're a chair.